Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 26, 2022 Select Board Meeting. I apologize for a few-minute delay in getting started. We were having some technical difficulties. We are calling this meeting to order at 7:05 tonight. And this is a hybrid meeting, and we have some folks that are joining us remote on Zoom. And the Select Board is all here in person in the Town Hall. Tonight, we are being broadcast and recorded by WACA TV. And without further ado, we will move on in our agenda to citizens' participation. I would ask that anyone that would like to participate via Zoom, use the raise-hand function. And we will call on you. And I see Mark DeSoni. You can go ahead and unmute yourself, Mark.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mark DeSoni, 49 Huthon Road.
Hi, Mark.
All well with the town of Florida in the hall tonight?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to, I know it's on the agenda, but I don't want to say it anyways. I'd like to thank the Board of Health for their free flu clinic they had last week. Everything went well, and it was, it was well-attended. Excuse me. And everything else, we're working on. My first time back in Town Hall in a couple of weeks. And yes, I do, I do miss a lot coming in, but I see everybody is, excuse me again, well-hand. So I'm just making sure that everybody is healthy, wealthy, and that Town Hall is doing wise to all. And have a good night going forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. And thank you for, for mentioning the, the flu clinic as well. So our Board of Health has been doing quite a few clinics lately. So I'm glad that you were able to, to come and get your flu shot. So. Thanks, Mark. Does anyone else have anything for citizens' participation tonight? Okay, seeing none. We are going to go ahead and move on to our agenda. The first item is an introduction of Catherine Byrd, our Human Resources Director. And I will turn this over to Michael to introduce Catherine.
Thank you very much, Brandy. So as everybody knows, our HR, our previous HR Director, Lisa Uliolo, after working here for four years, took a position in the town of Norwood. So we have been actively searching until recently for a new HR Director. We, after we had publicized the, the job ad, we had received about 15 applications, narrowed that down, and interviewed three people. And I'm pleased to present to you our new HR Director, Catherine Byrd. Catherine comes to us from the town of Medway, where she worked in both the town, in the town departments and also with the schools since 2014. Glad I got that right. She has just a diverse array of experience in HR, just from the hands-on, ditty-gritty type of stuff to some of the more bigger-picture items. She has come here and she's integrated seamlessly with our staff. And she's still learning the ropes and everything. We've got some unique systems here. We'll classify it that way. So without further ado, Catherine, I'd like to invite you up. And yeah, so Mike, and you can introduce yourself.
Hello. Thank you for having me. My name is Catherine Byrd, as Michael said. And I'm coming to you from the town of Medway, where I worked about eight-and-a-half years there in the payroll benefits and HR field. Prior to that, I have about 14 years in HR experience. And I'm truly looking forward to the opportunity here to serve the town of Ashland. So, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions or comments? Thank you. Steve, go ahead.
So Catherine, just apparently you're from New York originally?
I'm actually originally from New Hampshire.
New Hampshire, okay.
And I went to school in New York.
All right, but you stayed in New York for quite a while.
I did.
What, what brought you to Massachusetts?
A better opportunity for my husband, for his work.
Very good. Well, welcome aboard. We got to meet on Monday at the senior lunch.
Yes.
Again, welcome.
Thank you.
And you're, you're joining a great team.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So does anybody else have any comments?
No, just welcome.
Okay. Oh, no, 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 that's fine. You're fine.
Get back there.
So, so the other part, Catherine, the other part is, I mean, that was smooth. That was a smooth, that's from, from the podium. But the other thing is, is like, we, we've been in this hybrid mode for so long, and we very rarely have people come into the Select Board room for, for, for our meetings. So it's, so it's nice to have you here in person. I know trick-or-treating today, you know, day three, it, you know, you can't, you can't get any more community-oriented than the trick-or-treating in Town Hall, which was a lot of fun, too.
That was fun, yeah. So our next appointment isn't until 8 o'clock, so you're gonna have to stay there and talk to us.
But we are, we are looking forward to having, to hearing more about the, the things that you're gonna be doing with us and with Michael and the rest of the staff. So we, we are definitely excited to have you here. I know that one of the things for me, that, and I'm sure this has been something that, that, that you've been brought up to speed, too, is we have, we're working on a, we have a DEI task force that we put into place. And so I think one of the things that is top of mind for me is how we include more diversity and, and take a look at some of our policies and things to, to make sure that we have, from a personnel perspective, that we have a diverse and equitable town staff. So, so anyway, that's just my, my personal thing. So, welcome. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
You can, you can leave the podium now. You're good. You're good.
Thank you.
Yeah, you really don't have to stay.
Because, because, you know, our meetings tend to run a little on the, the longish side. So, you know, you don't have to stay till 10 o'clock, I swear. Okay. So moving right along, I know we have, at 7:20, we have our next appointment. Do we want to go ahead and turn this over to Kristin now? I know she's, I see her on the screen.
Kristin, are you ready?
I am ready. Shall I share my presentation from my screen? Is that the way that it's going to work best?
Yeah. So why don't I, why don't I have Jen introduce you? Because I don't know if everyone here and everybody watching knows who you are and, and what we are looking to do. So this is, this is a Decisions at Every Turn update. Now, Jen, do you want to introduce Kristin?
Jen's gonna do some technical.
I'm gonna make her, I'm gonna make her the co-host.
Okay.
Yeah, Michael can, yeah.
So Kristin is the leader of the Decisions at Every Turn Coalition. That has been around for several years now, almost 10 years, if I'm correct. It was partially grant-funded and partially, I believe the Select Board actually helped fund part of that initiative for a while. And so over the, over time, we have transitioned Kristin to being a town employee, which is part of our human services team and program development team. Recently, Kristin had, had a Decisions at Every Turn Retreat, where she shared a lot of new data that she had, she had. And so we thought it would be appropriate to have Kristin here and just have her present a high-level overview of what she covered and what she's working on. So Kristin, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you so much. I'm gonna do kind of two things here at the same time. Okay, can everyone see that?
Yep, we're good.
Okay. Awesome. So, so first, I want to thank Michael and Jen for the invitation to speak with you all tonight. It's such a pleasure being able to address the community and something that I feel so passionate about. So as Michael said, my name is Kristin French. I am the Director of Prevention Outreach for the town of Ashland. And I also serve as the Director for the Decisions at Every Turn Coalition, which specifically focuses on youth substance use prevention. So I thought what I do here tonight is to really talk about prevention very broadly, to be able to present it so we have an understanding about why it's important, how it works, and how it's currently being practiced in Ashland. And I'm gonna start very, very broadly, and then I'll narrow down to specifically what decisions at every turn has been working on. And I'm hoping that by presenting it this way, that it fosters some really good conversation and maybe stimulates some ideas of how we might want to see prevention growing in the future. What is the vision for prevention? How do we maybe expand prevention across the lifespan? And what sort of focus areas and scope might we expand prevention on? So that is the journey that I'm going to take you on here for the next 20 minutes or so. But to start off, why prevention works? It is, a, a framework guides all of the decisions. Data drives our work. We specifically focus on risk factors and then promote the protective factors to mitigate the risk that we might identify in the community. The community, the strategies are comprehensive, and the strategies are multi-level. So we, our prevention really looks at strategies from the individual level all the way up to the community level. So I'm gonna use those bullet points to go through the next couple of slides to really give a broad overview of what prevention is for those that might just be new to the field and new to understanding the practice of prevention. So this is a model that we use in prevention to kind of understand or promote an understanding of where prevention fits within the broader spectrum of behavioral health. When we talk about behavioral health, we, we talk about substance use and we talk about mental health. And that's sort of, that's what behavioral health is. And this is really the umbrella of the full spectrum of the work. Decisions at Every Turn works very, very, works in the, in the prevention space. But we do pay attention to what goes on in treatment and recovery, because we have to be able to share information. We have to be able to inform one another about what we might be seeing in young people to kind of know what might be needed down the road in terms of treatment and recovery. So prevention, definition-wise, it's a mix of comprehensive strategies that take place before a negative behavior surfaces. So if you really want to drill down a little bit in prevention, there are three kinds of strategies. Universal is for everyone, you know, you put one message out there for the entire population. Selective is when you notice a particular group that might be at higher risk. So you might tailor some of your prevention strategies to that particular group. And indicated is when a group is already engaging in those behaviors. And then you have really, really specific strategies to address those. So prevention can use all three, and, and prevention can also be very collaborative in that aspect as well. But I wanted to put that out there just in terms of a definition, so we really have an understanding of what prevention is and how it fits more broadly into community health. And then with my little delay button there. So as I talked about preventive delay, we really try to foster protective factors. The strategies are all science-based, so they've gone through rigorous testing and data to make sure that the strategies are proven effective to help reduce youth substance use. And, and we really look at attitude or behavioral changes, because we know that how we feel about something drives our behavior. So if we are talking about substance use, how a young person feels about drinking alcohol or using marijuana might influence their behavior when it comes to deciding about use or non-use. And my thing, cultivating positive outcomes is the, is the, is the last one. I also mentioned that prevention is effective because it uses a framework. And frameworks are important, because it really guides the decision-making process and it really guides and really influences how effective your outcomes are going to be if you follow sort of a pathway. So in prevention, many coalitions and communities use the strategic prevention framework. And just really briefly, and I, I think this will be intuitive for most folks, we start with an assessment. What is the data showing us? What are the needs of the community? What do we need to know about? And after we do an assessment, we look at that data and we look at the community itself. What are the resources we have in the community to address those needs? Do we have funding? Do we have organizations or individuals that can assist us in our work? Do we have people with a particular skill set that can help us, that can help us work on the data? So, and what kind of training might these folks need in order to help us in our journey? So that's, that's a capacity piece. Planning is when we look at our data and we identify what resources have in the community, and then what kind of strategies can we plan based on that? And that's kind of the fun part. And then implementation is actually doing the strategies within the community. And then finally, which is always important in any of the work that we all do, is, is evaluation. Did we meet our outcomes? Did we reach our goals? What was the process like? Did we, did we do that? Did we do this in the best way possible? And it's, it's very circular. It's not just step-by-step. We go back and forth and back and forth. But this is just a helpful way to guide the work that we do. You'll notice in the middle, there's sustainability. So anytime and throughout the lifespan of the work, we always want to kind of do a pulse check of whether the work that we're doing is sustainable. And I'll actually talk about sustainability towards the end of the presentation as well. And then cultural competence, which might be an outdated definition, but it's really, it really drives home is, is the work that you're doing reflective of the needs and the, and the people in the community? And that's, that's in either, the people in the community at the table helping to, helping guide the decision-making. So that's the cultural competency piece. I'm actually just gonna, I have a, I'm actually just admitted someone in there that came up on my screen. So I just admitted someone into the meeting, if that's okay.
Thanks, Kristin.
Okay, no problem. It's also, prevention's also data-driven. We use a lot of quantitative data in the form of surveys. Prevention also looks at qualitative data in the form of focus groups and key stakeholder interviews. And it's the qualitative data that really brings a narrative and context to the, to the, to the quantitative data. So just important to know that data does drive the decision-making in prevention. I also mentioned that it really works to mitigate the, or to address the risk factors that we have in our communities by building up the protective factors. So there's just a couple of sort of key points when we talk about risk and protective factors. There are many levels or layers of influence of where risk protectors, factors sort of live. At the individual level, also among our peers, within our family, within our school, that could also be like a workplace, and within the broader community. And you can kind of see here, you know, if it's an individual risk factor, we might be talking about, and this is specifically for substance use, maybe genetics or mental health, impulsivity or perception of both risks. And when we talk about protective factors, we might try to build up things like self-discipline, resilience, build positive relationships, things along those lines. A couple, a couple sort of, I think, important things to understand about risk and protective factors is that just because, so risk factors exist, they just do. It's important to know that if risk factors exist, it doesn't necessarily mean that a young person is going to choose to use a substance. It just means that we want to do a really good job on the protective side to sort of serve as that support, that network, that, that safety net at, at all these levels to really kind of, really kind of hope that the pathway is in the, the non-use direction. That's a little bit about risk and protective factors. What's also really interesting, too, is that if we can identify specific risk factors, we can then try to implement protective factors, like to, to counter at the same time. Okay. Strategies really happen. It's, it, strategies happen at every level, and they're very, very complex and multi-dimensional. We use in our, in our action planning, and a lot of prevention coalitions do the same thing. They use the seven strategies of community-level change. And this is really an opportunity to implement strategies at many different levels. Providing information and sort of, whoops. All right, the building skills, really sort of at the individual level. But there's a lot of work that can be done in terms of workshops, newsletters, educational materials, school classes, curriculum, to really work on all of those pieces. And some of these larger pieces, like providing support, having an opportunity just to be able to come together are things in, in the community is a way of providing support. Modifying, changing policy, when towns have strong ordinances and bylaws and policies, it really helps to protect youth in terms of like substance use. So it's important that when communities are sort of embarking on a, on a path in prevention, that they really look at all of these different strategies, because one strategy in itself is not going to be effective, but it's having a constellation of all of these different types of strategies that are going to increase, increase your, the efficacy of, of your outcomes. And then finally, strategies happen at many different levels. This is pretty similar to the seven strategies of community-level change. But what this really helps to identify is that when we have an intervention or strategy, it should happen at all these different levels. When we do, say, individual strategies, that might be a classroom curriculum. If we're talking about family and peer strategies, those might be, you know, family training programs, conflict resolution, how to foster family communication, things that work around the whole family system. When strategies are implemented at the, at schools per se, that might be a substance use policy in the school that is enforced school-wide. So it takes place in the school. And then in the community, we're thinking mostly about like policies, definition-wise. That was a very, very super quick 101 in prevention, just to sort of round everyone on some of the basic tenants that prevention follows in terms of it being a field and a science. I was gonna switch over. I can't see if anyone has questions, so maybe I'll just continue on with sort of the Decisions at Every Turn piece. And then at the end, I can take this down, and then I can see if anyone has questions, if that's okay. So now we're gonna focus down specifically on what prevention currently looks like in Ashland. And most of the work around prevention has been around youth substance use. And as Michael said, the Decisions at Every Turn Coalition has been the, the community group, the community partnerships that come together to focus on reducing and preventing youth substance use in this coalition model. We are drug-free communities funded. For the most part, we do receive some outside funding. But for the past 10 years or so, our primary funding source has been for the Drug-Free Communities Grant. And in order to receive a Drug-Free Communities Grant, we have to make sure that we have voices from all throughout the community. So this is a model that they put together. There's 12 sectors that are represented in our community. And the, the, really, the, the beauty of this is that it, it does enable everyone in the community to have a voice, everyone in the community to have a perspective, and really contribute their gifts, their talents, their skills, their resources in a way that just makes prevention much more rich and vibrant and, and effective. So this is the, this is the chart that they put together. We have our own here. So I have this out here that I've used in other presentations, but it's just a really good demonstration that we actually have all these folks at our table. And we have partnerships not only with the town and police and schools, we have parents and youth, we have youth, youth-serving organizations, businesses, police and fire. So we really do have a, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make Paul Kendall. We really do have a vibrant community all coming together to really support prevention. I think that everyone in Ashland should feel really proud about that. Okay. So I'm actually going to drill down into some of the data. So we talked about how prevention coalitions really capture a lot of different types of data to make their work effective. And these are the specific types of data that we collect here in Ashland. And Ashland does have great data. So we collected in the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey. That data is collected every two years. However, because of COVID, we had a one-year gap this year, so it was three years. But typically, every, every two years at the middle and high school. And they, I'll, I'll get into that in a minute. So the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey. We also collected in the Positive Community Norms Survey, Child and Mental Relations Survey, and youth and adult focus groups. So now I'll kind of go into each of those. All right. So Metro West Adolescent Health Survey, as I mentioned, taken every two years, typically at middle school and high school. Students actually report on a lot of different risk and protective factors. But for the coalition's purposes, we, we really isolate just kind of two sets of data. We look at substance use and we look at mental health to inform most of our strategies. So on the left, you'll see the substances that we, that they ask a lot of different questions, but the ones that we particularly focus on, alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, prescription drugs, and vaping. And sort of the variables that we look at are the current use and then students' perceptions of risk, perceptions of disapproval, both from parents and peers. And the reason why the perceptions are so important is because how young people think, really how we all think, kind of drives our behavior. So if a young person thinks that use is risky, they're less likely to use. Or if they think that their parents would disapprove of use, they are less likely to use. So we really want to be able to measure what young people perceive outside of themselves. And then with mental health, we look at the different markers that they, that they ask for, worry, stress, anxiety, depression, and suicidal behavior. This was a chart that was put together by a consultant that we just showed at our retreat a couple of weeks ago. And she just really looked, this is, this is at the high school. And this is current use for four of the, for the substances here, alcohol, marijuana, current use, and vaping. The reason why we put this chart out there is because we wanted to show our efforts from the beginning of our funding until now, so what this black bar is, and sort of what the rates were there versus what they were in 2020. feel really proud about that. Okay. So I'm actually going to drill down into some of the data, so we talked about how prevention coalitions really capture a lot of different types of data to make their work effective, and these are the specific types of data that we collect here in Ashland, and Ashland does have great data. So we collected in the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey, that data is collected every two years, however, because of COVID, we had a one-year gap this year, so it was three years, but typically every, every two years at the middle and high school, and they, I'll, I'll get into that in a minute. So the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey. We also collected in the Positive Community Norms Survey, Child and Mental Relations Survey, and Youth and Adult Focus Groups. So now I'll kind of go into each of those. Alright, so Metro West Adolescent Health Survey, as I mentioned, taken every two years typically at middle school and high school, students actually report on a lot of different risk and protective factors, but for the coalition's purposes, we, we really isolate just kind of two sets of data. We look at substance use and we look at mental health to inform most of our strategies. So on the left, you'll see the substances that we, that they ask a lot of different questions, but the ones that we particularly focus on, alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, prescription drugs, and vaping, and sort of the variables that we look at are the current use, and then students' perceptions of risk, perceptions of disapproval, both from parents and peers. And the reason why the perceptions are so important is because how young people think, really how we all think, kind of drives our behavior. So if a young person thinks that use is risky, they're less likely to use, or if they think that their parents would disapprove of use, they are less likely to use. So we really want to be able to measure what young people perceive outside of themselves. And then with mental health, we look at the different markers that they, that they ask for, worry, stress, anxiety, depression, and suicidal behavior. This was a chart that was put together by a consultant that we just showed at our retreat a couple weeks ago, and she just really looked, this is, this is at the high school, and this is current use for four of the, for the substances here, alcohol, marijuana, current use, and vaping. The reason why we put this chart out there is because we wanted to show our efforts from the beginning of our funding until now, so what's black bar is, is sort of what the rates were there versus what they were in 2021. I think the chart's a little bit hard to read, but I have the numbers. This was, so current alcohol use, and this is just at the high school, 28%, right? Vaping, 14, marijuana, 12, current use, 4. And the only reason why we don't have a chart on middle school is because the, the numbers were really low, we were just sort of focusing on, for the, for brevity, we were focusing on alcohol. But a couple other things, and people might want to ask questions about this afterwards, is from, from the time of funding to where we are now, we were able to see some decreases in some really effective work, you know, that, that we've been able to do over the past 10 years or so. And then I did just want to present the mental health data. The mental health data, I don't, I'm not super strong in, but here, you know, here are the numbers, I think that we're not surprised that most young people are reporting higher levels of stress and anxiety from the past couple years, but this is, this is also from the high school as well, the data. So I'll just kind of pause there for a moment to kind of take a look. And I will say, the, we do use it a little bit, but the schools use the mental health data a lot, and they do some amazing work around mental health, so I wanted to just put that up there. So the other survey that we do is the Positive Community Norms Survey, and you can see on the left, different criteria with regard to substance use that we survey on. And at middle school, we also do, they do a work around their core values of respect, responsibility, safety, making healthy choices. And we take that data, and the most successful programs that we've had at both the middle and the high school have been the Stand Campaign. I don't know if any of you have students in either the middle school or high school, but it's a social norms campaign that addresses the perceptions within the school, and by correcting the misperceptions that they have about what other kids are doing, or by what other kids think about risk and harm and disapproval, by messaging those and, and consistently putting out messaging that most students are making healthy choices, can start to shift attitudes and then can start to shift behaviors. So at the high school, I think we're in our sixth year, and at the middle school, we'll be in our, you know, COVID gap, but in our, in our second full year, and we're, we're going to start rolling out those campaigns like really soon. But as I said, the reason why we look at perceptions is because it's such a powerful, it's so powerful when it comes to a young person's decision-making. And then we also did something back in the spring of 2021 called the Developmental Relationship Survey. The Search Institute has this framework of the developmental assets and the developmental relationships, and the reason why we do so much work with this is because it revolved, the developmental relationships is all about promoting positive adult-youth relationships as a protective factor, and the, the schools were particularly interested in this because they wanted to really assess the, the student-teacher relationships, and I was really interested in it from a community adult perspective. So we implemented the survey about a year and a half ago, and the schools are using some of the results to do work within the, the school setting, but I was interested in some of the data to see what kind of relationships that young people thought they had outside of their parents or primary caregivers. So we're able to see this, these are some of the, these are the categories, or these are the variables, I guess, of what students were asked to rate on a scale from zero to four. Helping to make my community a better place, I'm involved in religious group of activity, involved in a sport or club, I'm given useful roles, responsibilities, developing respect, involved in creative things, serving others in my community, I have a safe neighborhood, and I have good neighbors that watch out for me. And this is, this is what was reported back out, anything over two is actually really strong. So most students at the high school believe that they have a safe neighborhood, they have adults outside of school who are good role models, they have developing respect for other people, have support from adults outside of school other than my parents, and involved in a sport, club, or other group outside of school, which I think is so important from the community perspective in talking about prevention, because it allows us to really send the messaging, I'm going to admit, on, keep up. Really allows us to spread prevention across the community, because in this sense, like any community adult can be a positive influence in a young person's life, and, and young people really feel that. The middle school was fairly similar as well. So I think this is all just really great news from a community perspective about how the young people view the adults in their lives. And then we also have conducted focus groups with both students at the middle school and the high school, and with parents and adults, and this is just, I pulled out some common themes from both the adults and the, and the parents, although there, there was a lot of results, obviously, but I thought these were really interesting. We asked them to define substance use, we asked about access, we asked about risk factors, protective factors, and prevention. And one of the things I thought was really striking about substance use, and this, these are the perceptions of the people at the table when they were asked, they said, "It doesn't seem that people think that substance use is vaping, or moderate alcohol use, or marijuana use." They perceive that people, that the community at, at large feels that substance use is, is, are more like harder illicit drugs, which can present a barrier for us in being able to talk about vaping as substance use if, if there is a perception out there that vaping isn't really substance use, or alcohol isn't substance use. So I thought that was a really interesting thing to tease out from, from the data that was pulled. And, you know, and in general, vapes either accessed online or through friends or older siblings, so the protective factors were amazing about, everyone said how wonderful the Ashland community is and how much there is for young people to do, and that, you know, folks in Ashland are just so supportive of, of young people, which I think is, which is, I think is great. And there's some really good things going on in the health and wellness classes as well. With regard to prevention, it's really actually nice that young people felt really connected to their parents as well, and parents actually felt really connected to their kids with regard to, with regard to prevention, and how strong relationships and that family unit is so important. I'm going to admit, Andy. And then, you're, you're free to kind of read through these, this is, this is going back to the seven strategies of community level change, but work that we specifically do through the decisions at every turn coalition. We provide a lot of information, we give a lot of educational materials, they're all free, most of them are on our website, so they try to get them as much as possible. Whenever we do community events, we, we have them out on our tables. Many of our, many of our materials are actually in, they're multilingual, which is great, it's kind of helps to reduce that barrier and allows more families to have access to prevention material. We do a lot of skill building, a lot of workshops, a lot of presentations to help build the skills around prevention, not just for the young people themselves, but for the adults in their lives to help support them as well. Provide support, help young people, give them alternatives, and different ways of, of getting involved, developing leadership skills, things of, becoming resilient, sort of growing that skill set that they need to be healthy adults. And then, you know, consequences, modifying, changing policy are things that, that we do as well, and are engaged in. So as I said from the beginning, you know, when we, when you have a lot of different strategies and you're doing a lot of different things in a lot of different areas, you can hopefully increase your success in being able to be really effective in, in prevention. I'm going to try, I'm going to try to just show you what it looks like, I'm hoping that it links up and then I can get back. Everything that we talked about, we put on our website in this great little interactive chart here. So anytime, this needs to be updated, but anytime we have a strategy, we drop it into our, our chart of prevention that it was by color, or by behavioral promotion, which ecology it came into, and you can kind of circle through and kind of see all the different things that are going on. And what's really great about this is we're able to really assess where we're really strong in, and where there might be some gaps, we need to do some additional work. Let me go back. So now I just wanted to take just another couple minutes to let you folks know what we have going on, on this upcoming year. For the past couple years, we have done our planning around prevention, larger prevention, recognition months and weeks. So this is the calendar that we try to focus our efforts on, sometimes it's like a little bit of leeway, but we really try to do like our social media, our trainings, our campaigns, the messaging that we do, we try to stay pretty true to the different topic areas that we have here. This is on our website, but this is what we have going topic-wise over the next year. Might be really hard to read, but we actually, we have a lot of stuff that's like already in place, already through the end of the year, that we're really excited about. I'm going to just show you two flies of things that are coming up super quick. Tomorrow night at high school, in their library, we have an insight, if you're not familiar with that, it's an interactive exhibit where 21 and older get to come in and poke around a stage teen bedroom and really look to possibly, or be able to identify possible uses of, of substance use. So it was, we did it right before COVID, two years ago, it was really great, if you can come out, please do, we're open for two hours, but you can spend as much time in there as you like, we're really excited to be able to offer that again, and we'll have, some of the, police will be there as well. And then on November 7th, we're going to have our first in-person presentation, Dr. Safer Medina, who's a fabulous pediatrician, he did a presentation for us a couple years ago, but he's coming back to talk about alcohol and marijuana, which is sort of taking a backseat, I think, for a lot of us, because we've been so focused on vaping over the past couple years, that we want to turn our attention back to alcohol and marijuana, which are still, you know, for youth nationwide, not just locally, are still, you know, still of concern. And then over the winter months, we're doing some really cool things with community book reads. The Lilia's Adventure, she's actually, the author, Deborah Burke Henderson is actually an Ashland resident, she and her inspiration for Lila are going to be here in person, and we're going to do multiple little book reads at the community center, and it's going to be a really great night, intergenerational, just an opportunity to really focus on that, that community connectedness piece that's so important in prevention. And then in January and February, we're going to do a couple book reads partnering with the Ashland Public Library on worry and consent for, these books are aimed more at the older elementary pre-teen, but we're also going to be doing, wrapping in some teen programming as well. So we're really looking forward to that, because it's a little bit different than what we've done before, but it ties in really good with our, with our January focus on mental health and our February around healthy relationships. It's a picture of our retreat, it was, it was really great, I have to say, it was so nice getting back in person with so many of our stakeholders, this was right at the end, and we had, a lot of people had to like leave by that point, but this is amazing, and all this, all this writing that you see, plus another one over here, is going to be put into an action plan and how, you know, how folks at the table would like to see prevention moving forward in the future. So it was really great to have everyone there. And people who have seen me present before or have heard me talk before, I always like to end on something positive, and this is what we showed at the retreat that just encapsulated the last nine years of the accomplishments that everyone as a community has contributed to, to support prevention. So there's been trainings, workshops, collaborations, work with parents, work with students, there's just been a tremendous amount of work. And I would be remiss if I also didn't mention that this work builds on efforts that were done by individuals way before I was even here. Amy Turncliff, Claudia Rose, Liz Burns, Kathy Bach, Betsy Emberly, my gosh, I'm missing one, and Cara Terrell, they were all parent volunteers that came together to really do some amazing work. So as, as amazing as you all might be seeing this work now, it started way back then, and they deserve a lot of credit for really pushing prevention, you know, more than 10 years ago, when they saw a need in Ashland that, that young people needed to be supported. So that's all I have.
Great. Thank, thank you so much, Kristin, that was-
I'm sorry, that was a little bit long.
That's okay, that's all right. And you were also, you were also handling all of our Zoom admin work, so thank you for that, too.
Anytime.
So thank you so much for your presentation, the, the work that the decisions coalition does is, is amazing, and I was sorry I couldn't make the retreat this last time, but, but it's, it's great to see the data come in, because I know that, you know, one of the things that you had talked about was that developmental relationship survey, and not being able to have the Metro West Health Survey for a few years, you were kind of using that as sort of a bridge to see where the kids were. And so it's, it's interesting to see the data, I'll let, you know, the rest of the board ask questions too, but I'll have a couple questions for you as well on that, but, but thank you for the, the presentation. Does anyone from the board have, Joe?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Christine, thank you for the presentation. It's like preaching to the choir with respect to me, that's what I used to do when I was in the schools. I was a school resource officer, I was also the first dare officer in Ashland, and we did programs with respect to substance abuse, respecting your body, the consent and the boundaries and everything, and I, and I was greatly, greatly interested in, in that, I was just kind of curious, on the February 8th seminar, will there be any legal discussion regarding the national laws regarding consent? Because it is very, I can, I can tell you right now, kids don't understand it, they don't get it. And when we were doing this presentation, it was called Youth and Law with the high school, there was a lot of misinformation that these kids had, and they were clueless, especially when you're, you're into the dating aspect of it, and you have a freshman dating a junior or a senior, and the freshman's not 16, they can't give consent, and you have an 18-year-old that may be dating, you know, boy, either way, and it can, it can turn into a nightmare. So I was just wondering if, if any, any discussion or any part of that seminar will be part of that discussion.
Sure. So I, I, I was having a little bit of trouble here, however, I, I think I got the, I think I got the main part of your question. The book that is going to be used is really for like younger kids, so consent, which was an interesting word that she used, because she actually wrote a book that she initially published in England, and it was a different word with consent, but consent in this context is about sort of like body autonomy for like younger kids, so even just, you know, when, when your friend pats you on the back, or your aunt wants to give you a hug, or, you know, your friends might want to like shake your hand, it's more about being able to say like, you know, "This is my body, this is what I'm comfortable with," even in the most like friendly of gestures. So that, the, the conversation that will be with the younger kids won't, I think, get to the, the more, the content that you're talking about, which may be more, more appropriate or maybe more common in those older relationships, so it's just going to be more about that kind of definition of consent, if that makes sense. And I'm actually happy, I have, I have, like, we're, we're giving free books to like all the, all the attendees, so I actually have a copy of the book, if the board wants to just kind of like take a look at it, that's totally fine, but I think the way that consent is going to be defined is more along those lines and not, not at the level to which you have, that, that you just mentioned, if that makes sense.
And just to add that, well, just to, to expound on that with respect to the high school kids, is there anything up at the high school right now that's being offered to provide those students that information? Because that could lead to stress levels going, you know, above and beyond, you know, what, what you're seeing now, especially if there's an individual or someone that's in a relationship, and it could be an abusive relationship as well. And these are some of the things that we brought up back in 1994, that's how far back this, this whole program started, so, yeah. So, uh, yeah, we were the dinosaurs. It's the start of this project and you folks are the, you know, you, you're the, you're the Jetsons right now considering, you know, you, you've taken this and, and run it. So, uh, I, I thank you all for doing what you're doing. And I have to give credit to Martha Schoenfeld. I don't know if a lot of people know who she was. She was a health director of the high school and, uh, we sat down and collaborated on many different surveys. Matter of fact, I found the copy of the first survey that we did and it was pretty, pretty interesting. My, my last question, and I don't want to monopolize the, the question period. Um, the two charts that you showed, uh, with respect to the data with vaping and things of that nature, has, can that be broken down to grades? So like if you, you had a freshman class and then you go through four years and now they're seniors, can you see a comparison and to compare, you know, what the numbers were when they were freshmen to when they became seniors, you know, that four-year period? Is that something that you folks do as well?
Right. Yes. So the, yeah, the two charts I showed you were like, were very, very brief. The larger reports that the schools receive do have that data broken down by, uh, broken down by grade, um, and also trend lines as well. So you could, and also they also break it down by, uh, sex grade and, um, I think Metro West Ashland and then by year. So you could see trends as well. Um, I didn't present any of that tonight, but it is in the larger reports that the schools have. Um, so that, that information is definitely available.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay.
Um, Steve had something and then Yolanda.
So, uh, thank you, Kristin, for the, uh, for the great presentation. A couple of, uh, I guess, observations and questions. So number one, uh, you know, how do you address as part of your mission, the, um, kind of online activities of, of our students? Um, you know, clearly it impacts mental health. Clearly it impacts peer pressure. So that's number one. Number two is, you know, you didn't necessarily speak to the impact of COVID over this period of time, but, you know, clearly the one chart for the Adolescence Health Survey kind of shows that the implications of COVID. And when you combine it with the, with the recent report that came out about educational testing around the country, but specifically in, in Massachusetts and the decline in testing scores, um, there's, there's the recipe there, I think, for, for lots of, lots of stress.
So I would say, um, the work that we were doing during COVID probably didn't talk so much about COVID itself, but just sort of, uh, an observation that, um, not just youth, but so a lot of people were, were struggling with mental health. So we did a lot of work around, um, connecting, reaching out, um, you know, in the mental health space. Um, more recently, sort of with, with the data, we've been working with, so again, like the schools probably do the lion's share of the work with mental health. Some of the work that the coalition has been doing to support mental health is by bringing in programs into their health and wellness classes. So I would say that the school administration digs a lot further and deeper into, um, their concerns about mental health. And we've worked together to help, um, support some of their concerns. So, um, we have been bringing in Minding Your Mind, which is a mental health, uh, mental health organization out of, um, Needham, I think, maybe NADIC. Um, and it used to be called the Young Adult Speaker Program. They just changed the name and I can't recall what it is, um, offhand, but it's basically, um, in the health and wellness classes at the high school, this will be our third year. And at the middle school, this will be our second year. First year, they just, just did eighth graders. They should be able to do sevens and eighth graders. And they have, um, young adults come in, um, and speak with students about their own, um, mental health, really their mental health stories. Um, and it's, it's inspirational. Young people connect with them. Um, they're able to share their challenges and how they coped with their, you know, how they cope with mental health or stress, um, or suicidality or, or substance use. Um, but they do it in a way that is, um, that is very prevention oriented, um, that is very compassionate. Um, they provide like skills and resources and trainings throughout the, throughout their presentation. But the way that it's delivered is just done in such a way that, um, that the students just connect, um, with, with the speakers. And, um, and we, you know, we created evaluation. We made sure after we did like the first one that the students thought this was, you know, um, a worthwhile objective, that they, uh, that, that they learned a lot. They learned some skills, that they felt that they, um, were now, um, able to seek help if they wanted to, that the stigma around it was, around mental health is being, um, uh, increased. So hopefully that's like sort of answered your question, but in terms of the mental health, like that's, that's probably one of our biggest ways that we've been able to help reach young people is like through the schools by offering programs and getting them right into the classrooms.
Good. Great. Thank you, Kristin.
Okay, sure.
Yolanda.
Thank you for the presentat- I have to turn my mic on. Thank you for the presentation. It was interesting, uh, hearing and, and seeing the changes that have happened since the funding and things like that. I did have one question and one thing that I noticed in regards to vaping that I was very pleased to see, that it had really spiked and it has now come down. Is that true that we're seeing the vaping come down or is that just, they're not reporting it?
I know. No. So it's so interesting because like communities everywhere are like talking about that. And there, I mean, I don't, I don't think, well, so also the, the date, the time that the survey was taken was November of 2021. All right. So we all have to keep that in mind that that's like almost a year ago. Um, but, um, we're all be like, well, how, how did the rates go down? Why did the rates go down? I, I don't think that you're lying about that. Um, we think that a lot of it had to do like probably like with access. Um, in terms of like a lot of policy and communities were really shutting down and having kids, you know, having access to, you know, vapes and droves and things like that. Um, also kids were at home for a long period of time. And they weren't able to actually do it because their parents are like sitting right there. Um, in places where kids might vape, like maybe the school bathroom, maybe the mall parking lot, maybe like hanging out somewhere. Um, you know, kids weren't getting together, so they didn't really have that like social, like, you know, get together kind of thing. Um, but we're, we're, we're optimistic. Like this is a huge opportunity for us to be able to say like, if rates have dropped, like let's, let's keep rates low. There's no reason why you need to, there's no reason why they have to go back up again.
Right.
Uh, so we're trying to use that as an opportunity and really, um, looking at the like perceptions and things along those lines. Um, you know, we also, being realistic, like these might, we're, we're looking at these, um, at this data within like that framework of COVID or in that timeframe of, of COVID. So we have to kind of like, you know, always kind of keep that in mind, but it would be amazing if we could get through the next year, two years when they test again or when they survey again to have those rates low. And there was also a ton of like, um, education and there was a lot that was going on with regard to vaping that hopefully like young people were like, whoa, this is probably not something we should be doing.
It's, it's one of those things that I, the, the kids just don't get it, how dangerous it is. So, but thank you. It was, uh, really appreciative and, uh, really good to see this information. Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks, Kristin. Uh, I just had a, a quick question, then a informational question and some observations. On the school, uh, the school policy, ATOD, what is that?
Uh, um, alcohol, tobacco and other drugs.
Oh, and other drugs. Okay. So it's all a substance abuse focus. Uh, the, the schools have other policies that you're working with for mental health or?
Um, the mental health, to be honest, I'm not sure. Um, I don't know if Paul being here on the call and I'll be on the school committee might, would be able to respond to that. But, um, I do know that the schools, um, I'm more familiar with their, with their alcohol, their ATOD policies. Um, they're in their second year of a program called I Decide, which is, um, which is a program, which of, which if a young person is, um, caught using on campus, um, rather than, um, rather than just like a full suspension and like nothing, it, it takes away the punitive aspect of it. So they actually do like reflection. They meet with a counselor. They meet with a nurse. They, um, they have to do like online courses. So it's much more of an educational, um, and intervention-based consequence for using. Um, and they have the option of going into like longer counseling, um, substance use counseling to, you know, to kind of help with their, um, most of, most of it has been like, has, has been vaping. So, um, and that's been doing really well at both the middle school and high school. I think they're, they're running it there in the second year of that program. So, um, again, more familiar with that than I am with, with any mental health policies.
I just, so in terms of the mental health, um, of course, that's, you know, I'm glad to hear that there's so much focus on that. And the trends from your graph, um, don't, don't look good. At least this is, the data is a little old at this point. What's, what's your opinion of the last survey, which was that during COVID, this last survey that was taken?
The survey that was, so this was taken November of 21. The previous one was in November of eight, of 2018. So it was actually before COVID.
Yeah. And what do you think is, are you getting, uh, indications or discussion about what is going on with the kids? With, with this kind of, is it stress, COVID, expectations, substance abuse?
Um, so I think, I think the report, and I, I don't have, I didn't like pull it out here. I think the high school report might actually indicate the large, what young people are indicating as their sources of stress. There actually might be, there might be data on that. Um, but I think, um, you know, for, for a lot of communities, um, academics, um, school pressure, you know, kind of that pathway of getting it to call, like that the whole, the whole academic piece, I think it can be very, very stressful. Um, social media has played a part, I think, over the last couple of years in terms of, um, how particularly, um, particularly girls, um, in their mental health with, and the impact that social media has had on that. Um, I'm trying to think of some, I, I mean, I don't know whether like COVID per se has, but, um, in terms of like the, the physical aspects of it, but in terms of like the isolation, uh, the, you know, not being able to socialize, having these huge gaps in academics, things like that. I think that all just starts to kind of like, you know, pile up. And then, then the adjustment back into like normal world is also like very, very stressful as well. And things are just, um, they didn't, you know, they didn't go back to exactly the way they were. So I think that's also really, really difficult. And, and, and maybe a little bit is that, um, young people are also more comfortable, um, saying that they have stress and anxiety or the more, you know, the more comfortable talking about it, they're more comfortable, they, they've had, um, some training and education on being able to like recognize what the signs and symptoms are. So now they can say, oh, I, yes, yes, I have experienced anxiety because now I know what it is. So I think it could be a lot of different things.
All right. Thanks, Kristin. Thank you for your work and the, and the, um, in the coalition as well.
So Kristin, I, we're running a little short on time. So, which is fine. This has been a great discussion. So, um, I appreciate your coming and joining us. The one thing I wanted to ask was, um, I know you have the hidden and plain site that, that's happening tomorrow. Um, but you guys do, uh, a bunch of other parent programs as well, right? Could you talk a little bit about, um, that piece of it?
Sure. So, um, what we have set up already is, um, on November 7th, I had mentioned that, um, Dr. Safer Medina is going to come and present at the community center specifically on alcohol and marijuana. Um, we're actually going to be doing two programs in, um, in, uh, January, um, focused on anxiety. And we're going to have two different speakers. One speaker is going to, um, be more in that middle school, high school, um, set and that for like parents and caregivers and how to support your like middle high schooler. Then we'll have a separate presentation for how to support your, your like elementary school student. But both of the topics will be around anxiety. Um, over that, um, haven't gone too much further than that, but I will say that one of the things that we've been trying to resurrect have been parent coffees, just sort of these, these smaller opportunities for folks to get together in a more informal setting and maybe just more conversational. Um, we have a wonderful, um, she's an Ashland resident. She works for Wayside, but she's very passionate about youth mental health and we're trying to get those, um, trying to get those up and running. It's just been, it's just been a little bit difficult. Um, but I'd love, I'm sort of putting out a plea right now that we, you know, we, we really want to set them up. We really want to make them successful. We really want to know, um, you know, what parents, what's most important to parents and, and we'll, we'll pull those together. So we have, we're absolutely motivated to do it. Um, we just haven't really been able to kind of get them off the ground.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yeah, for sure.
Hopefully a lot of folks come out to see the Hidden and Plain site. I, I saw that pre-COVID and it's a great, it, it's just, it's a great exhibit and, um, good to, good to know as a parent, like what to, what you may need to, to look out for, you know.
For sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Well, thank you, Kristin. We appreciate your, your being here and your, the work that you guys are doing and, um, and, uh, thanks for, for, uh, for your great presentation tonight. So.
Thank you guys so much for all your support.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
You too. Okay. Um, moving on in our agenda, um, we have a joint meeting with the planning board to discuss the comprehensive plan. We're running a little, a few minutes late, so I apologize to the folks that are here, uh, both in person. And then I see Deepa, uh, virtually as well. So, um, do you guys want, why don't we get some chairs and, and bring you guys up here? And we'll, we'll get, uh, get our joint meeting started.
You know what I was literally about to ask, Kristin? The ATOD, I'm wondering if prescription drugs and the use of prescription drugs and oxys is caused by that category. That's a, that's a big, that's a big thing going on right now. Sorry about that.
Yep. You guys good?
Yes.
12 inches from the microphone.
It's right, 12 inches, 12 inch rule. We were told by Barbara, you have to be 12 inches away so people can hear you.
Oh, okay. I don't, I don't, I don't subscribe to the 12-inch microphone rule. Yeah, whatever. As long as people can hear you. That's all that matters. So, so thank you guys for, for your, for your patience and for joining us here tonight. It's good to see you guys. Um, Deepa's on to, yep. Hi, Deepa.
Hi.
So Tricia, do you want to go ahead and, um, call the planning board meeting to order?
I have no idea what time it is. I will officially-
8:08.
8:08.
I will officially call the planning board meeting to order at 8:08.
Okay. Do you need to do a roll call? Who's gonna, I mean, it's just-
We don't usually open a roll call.
Okay, okay. Then we're good.
We're good.
All right. So thank you guys for, for joining us tonight. It's, uh, you know, I know you guys have a full, full planning board meeting, I think probably scheduled tomorrow night, right? Yep, yep. So we will keep this hopefully short and sweet. And, um, so just to kind of bring everyone up to speed on what's been happening with this. So back in the spring, the planning board, um, brought to the select board, um, a request for a comprehensive plan and the funding that would need to kind of accompany it. So we've been working with, um, working with the planning board back and forth. We've had a couple of joint meetings. We've had a couple of drafts of a comprehensive plan. Um, it's evolved, which I think has been good. And so, um, at this point, we are, uh, working on a, you know, this is a joint project. Um, and we are excited that it's kind of coming, coming into a good place where, um, the plan will be to go to town meeting in three weeks and, uh, ask for some funding to fund the comprehensive plan process. Um, and so, you know, just, um, you know, the, the scope of this has, has evolved also just from sort of like the comprehensive plan, what is by Massachusetts statute to sort of much, a little bit bigger and broader to incorporate some of the, some of the, um, things that we had done initially on a strategic plan. Um, but it was never kind of brought to the, brought to the finish line there. Um, and also just some other things that have, are important to Ashland and to make it ours, um, to make it much more, I guess, more comprehensive is the, so it's a much more comprehensive plan. Um, so, you know, we had, the last joint meeting we had was about six weeks ago. Um, I think, you know, in general, just like we've all reflected on kind of how that went. And, you know, we want to make sure that we continue to move in a, in a, um, really positive direction with this. I think that we've gone back and forth with drafts, um, a few times. And I think we are probably 95% there, I hope.
I hope so.
Um, and so the, um, the initial draft that, that, that the planning board had, um, Michael had added some, some additional scope to that, to incorporate the, the sort of the strategic plan part and the select board's, um, partnership with that. And then Tricia had taken that document and kind of put it back into sort of a, um, much more, I don't want to say manageable, but that's kind of the condensed. That's a really, that's a really good way to put it. Um, and I think we are in the home stretch. So I think the, the goal tonight is, you know, um, to spend the next 20 minutes, half hour, however, um, you know, I don't think it should take more than, than that, to be honest, to go through the last few changes. Cause the last time we had met, we had- um, you know, I don't think it should take more than, than that, to be honest, to go through the last few changes, because the last time we had met, we had, um, made some suggestions, sent that over to the planning board, but I don't think that you guys had a chance to discuss that before, you know, during your last meeting, because of the timing of it, um, our meeting schedule has been off because of the holidays and stuff, sorry. Um, so we are, I think, gonna go through some of these last changes, see if we can get to a good place and a consensus, and then talk about next steps, does that sound, sound good for everybody? Okay, all right, um, so let's, are you good with that, or do you want to dive right, should we dive right into the, to the plan and see if there's any?
Yeah, just, just to summarize, um, so we have the description that we have been, that has been going back and forth. We had at some point, uh, a ti, a simplified timeline, right? But I don't know if that's, I don't have that in front of me today, um, I don't know if that's part of the discussion. And then we have the goal, I would say, of, of, a, as you said, Brandy, um, asking for the funding at town meeting, which is a warrant that you're putting together, Michael, is my, okay. So those are the three pieces, is the, is the timeline still part of that piece, or, I mean, i- is that something we're discussing as well, is that part of the piece that we're doing, or is that something we're developing as we go along? That maybe has had less, um.
We haven't really done a lot of discussion on the timeline, but, um, I have a copy of it, because like we were kind of talking about it, in general, just kind of like looking at to see like when, you know, when we would potentially start this, but we haven't, we haven't really like had a, a deep discussion on the timeline.
I just didn't want to get twenty minutes into discussion and say, oh, wait, what about this timeline we talked about at one point? You know, if it's critical to our, what we need now, maybe it's not critical to what we need now.
I was under the impression that we were, uh, assuming we do get the funding at town meeting, then, you know, your timeline starts. I mean, I, you know, we've done some work, but until we have funding.
Yeah, and I was, I was also under the impression, never having gone through this process before, that, that the timeline would also, the more precise aspects of the timeline versus it being, oh, it's a two-year process, that the consultant, when they came, come on board, would help us figure that out, because part of their, what they're good at, um, is that, I mean, I, I know Peter's on the call, I think he's one of the most experienced in this, in this stuff, um, that was, I don't, I'll let him come in if he, if he can, I think he had a.
He has, yeah, Peter.
Yeah.
Oh, Brandy, I'm sorry, I just had a question, Michael, I see that the funding is in the capital budget on the warrant, is that what we're talking about, or just, I just thought it was a budget item?
No, it's, um, a part of an appropriation of free cash.
Yes, okay, but, so there's not going to be a separate warrant article, it's going to be as you see in the budget, which is there now, okay.
I do think it might be helpful at town meeting to say something about what we are planning to do, I think that would be a helpful thing to do.
There's a couple of specific items, um, so, you know, obviously, we have the transfers to the stabilization fund and OPEP trust per the policies that we have established, then we have the, uh, capital items that have been deferred from town meet, or from the Springtown meeting, uh, then we have, um, money for the Valentine estate being put towards that, and then we have called out the funding for the comprehensive plan as part of that.
Okay.
Anna, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I mean, I, I think twenty minutes is not a lot, so I'm not sure, um, you know, our whole board is not here, I think we have a meeting tomorrow, and the comprehensive plan is on that agenda, and I don't think the board, we as a board have yet discussed it. Um, I mean, I certainly took a peek at the changes made to the document that Tricia and I worked on, which to me is kind of a supplement to the prior document, not so much a replacement, but it's part of the prior document we discussed here together, um, I viewed Tricia and mine edition, which really is a representation of the planning board's discussion as a supplement to that prior document, I didn't really look at it as a replacement, I thought it would be. Oh, sorry, yeah, yeah, yeah. Like, my recollection is the last time we all met, we were looking at a four or five-page document that Michael had made changes on, and then we had taken that document to the planning board, and the planning board created a shorter condensed version with Tricia's heavy editing, because Tricia essentially made that happen, and then we, Tricia and I tried to condense the thoughts of the planning board to that document, which is more of a supplement, right?
Just hit the microphone on that.
So I don't, we as a planning board have not discussed the latest changes, you know, I thought this was more to kind of connect the dots between the two boards, and then give the planning board a chance tomorrow at our regular meeting to talk among ourselves and figure out where we stand. Um, what I'll share is, you know, the changes I saw to the supplemental document I liked, I thought that they made sense. Um, I have some concerns about the movement away from detail, more towards kind of general, it's almost like we have a spirit document of how we want to do this, and it's not necessarily as detailed as I would have liked to see. I'm hoping tomorrow the planning board can, um, focus on what are the details that are missing, such as how do we make that timeline, which I think is extremely important, um, work with the supplement, right, um, so that we truly make sure that we fini, we start and finish the comprehensive plan in a way that makes sense, and I prepared some thoughts on this, um, I'm happy to share them now, but we have such a short amount of time, I just don't know if this is the right time, whereas the planning board hasn't spoken as a board.
You need to go back and, and I guess, discuss the tweaks that we made, uh, at our last, or several meetings ago, which were pretty minor, I mean, I just, just understand, Anna, um, I'm a little confused about supplement and, and so on, I, um, the document I'm working on, I assume, is what Tricia condensed, and that that is what we're discussing, and ultimately, coming to an agreement on language-wise, is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, I mean, I think in my mind, um, and Michael's document had a lot of explanation and of what's a comprehensive plan, what's a strategic plan, why do we do that, how do we have the authority, blah, blah, blah. And so it was a lot of background information, but it wasn't, um, it wasn't geared toward what we are doing right now. It was background information, and that's why I said, I put that aside to get to the working document that we actually needed, so to me, this is, this is, replaces everything after the informational part of your document, would you say that's fair, Michael? Okay, so that's the way I've been looking at it, but there's still that background information, that's just as valid.
And so have we, we've used your condensed version, and ultimately, we, we responded, we discussed, and as I said, we tweaked the last revision, I guess, that was brought to us.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, I believe it went out to all of the planning board, I don't, Kate did send, um, uh, some thoughts to Brandy and I this afternoon, um, about it in general, I don't think anyone else had any further thoughts, we have Deepa on there, who can jump in at any time, if, if she does, but I think the, like you said, the tweaks to the document that we've been discussing, to me are, they are minor, and I think we should, I think we should go forward and discuss those tonight, um, just to, that we're in one place at one time, and.
And just to, just to clarify, you guys have talked about this, right, like you guys have discussed, m- maybe not the, the tweaks that we had made, but you had, before you sent it over to us, that was something that the planning board had talked about, right?
We had a, I think, a very limited time to discuss it because of the length of our meeting and stuff, but I don't think, I, I don't think there was, besides the understanding that needed kind of modifying, I don't think there was, I think there was general support for the direction that we were going.
Okay.
So.
The timeline and the tweaks together have not been discussed, so I think there's an updated timeline for Michael, there's the tweaks, and that would be something that we as a board would discuss tomorrow. Um, you know, I, I, I feel like it is appropriate to kind of share some of my initial thoughts that I had written out. Um, I'll try to keep it briefer than this one page that I drafted, and big picture, what I'll say is I think the timing of a comprehensive plan is very auspicious right now in light of our moratorium for development, and essentially, we are in a situation where we have no choice at this point, other than to plan, and to do it in an emergent, kind of emergency manner, if you will. Um, I will add that the com, the planning board started this discussion last late, I would say, early fall. I remember we had a, a retreat in November, um, around Thanksgiving, if I recall, in, a year ago. Um, I think there was a lot of concern from town staff at that time about capacity, whether we even had a capacity as a community to do comprehensive planning. A year later, here we are, and we're looking at a moratorium, right, in development, so to me, I think it's extremely important to take responsibility, me as a planning board member, to take responsibility for the fact that the planning board has not planned over the last few years, um, certainly not while I was there, and, you know, we certainly pushed as hard as we could, but I think the planning board in general should, could have done more, not just with me there, but previously. But I also think the select board has some responsibility too, as far as, um, putting us in a situation, I think now, where having a comprehensive plan is really not a choice anymore. We have to have this done because we have not planned, and we have not had a strategy to prevent a moratorium. Because we developed in a way without planning, without a clear vision, that led to resources being impacted, so I feel like we need to say that, and we need to take responsibility for it, so that when we walk into this comprehensive plan together, all together, we actually assured that we finish it, and that we finish it in time for the moratorium to wrap up, so that moving forward, we're in a better position together, that's kind of what I'm seeing here.
Shared responsibility, absolutely, no question.
With that in mind, I think the timeline is the heart of this discussion, um, and the planning board has not reviewed the latest version of the timeline, and therefore, I think, deeper conversation here today is probably premature, until the planning board can look at the timeline, again, taking responsibility mutually for it. Um, and some of the things I'm thinking about is our original planning board document from February this year had some very specific timeline-related suggestions as to what we do each month, which element do we focus on each month. Yes, some of that is the consultant's expertise, but everyone here knows how to, how to do basic organizational tasks, and because we got ourselves here, I think we need to own that. I think we have a responsibility to own it, so that if we're going to commit a quarter million dollars to it, we are going to be part of that, and we're going to own the process from the beginning.
So you're planning to discuss that tomorrow, timeline is going to be part of that discussion?
The board to focus on tomorrow?
But while we're here tonight, can we at least discuss the, you know, the change, actually, the one change that we made, which was the addition of, uh, I think the language was, and this was a recommendation that came from a resident, and Yolanda brought up at our last meeting regarding having people represent precincts within the community. Does that make sense to you? Is that something that's?
Absolutely, I, it makes sense to me, that we would want to make sure that every component of our community has a chance to participate.
And, and it's not as if we have, you know, you look at our precinct map, and it's really like, you can't really define distinctive sections, you know? Uh, wh- where you live is, is, is a distinctive area, without question, the Pond Street, uh, area, but that's split between two.
The area that complains about the Rotary.
But that's, but it's split, it's split between two.
I may be the only one, but I think it's.
Roundabout, it's a roundabout, Tricia.
People who don't live in our district love the Rotary.
Yeah, well, but it's, uh, but it's split between two precincts, so the precincts aren't really defined as, as unique areas. You know, but that being said, I, you know, we have six precincts, it's, 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 it's a good idea, not that we're gonna necessarily be able to, uh, uh, get volunteers from all six, but that's the goal, and so that's really the only major change, I think, that we made.
The other change we made was, um, in talking to Tricia when she had put this together, and when we talked about the membership of the steering committee, we were talking about initially voting members, and, because we thought that there was some sort of charter.
I, I could not find my source for that, so I retract it.
But I remember having that conversation, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I looked immediately afterwards, couldn't find anything.
I couldn't find it either, so I retract it until some future date when I find the evidence.
She's gonna call us at two in the morning. Um, so in the first paragraph under membership of steering committee, we changed that instead of all steering committee members would be voting members, we said all steering committee members will be residents of Ashland, because I think that's more inclusive. Um, and then the only other thing that we added was the very end, the last sentence, actually, of the whole thing, under drafting phase and approval process, where we talk about, um, after town meeting, the planning board will submit the comprehensive plan to the Department of Housing and Community Development, because that's, um, as we had talked about, was the part of the statutory, um, language.
Yeah, and I, I have no problem with any of those changes, Deepa, do you, what, do you want to jump in? Do you have any, um, thoughts, objections, support of the changes or the document as written?
No, these tweaks absolutely make sense, and they're right on.
All right, thank you. So it sounds like, um, that, that we have consensus on, on this document as it stands right now, so, um, I know.
As best we can, because the planning board hasn't made a final discussion at their meeting, so I mean.
We will discuss it as part of our meeting, um, tomorrow with the time that we have, um, but all members of the planning board knew that this was a joint meeting, and had an opportunity to come, and, you know, I mean, obviously, uh, that someone might not have been able to make the time, but we were making sure we had a quorum here as well.
And we do have Kate Jersik on as well, so she's been able to join us, so, so I, I, I mean, I know Marcelo is, is not here, which, you know, we wish that, that, that he could be, um, but I think, I think the, if, if we can kind of start talking about next steps and how we're going to frame this up, because we are going to town meeting in three weeks. So, Yolanda, looks like she has to, she wants to say something before I.
Yeah, I just want to, a couple of comments for, for Anna's, but also, when we were talking about the timeline, so Michael did work on a timeline, then a few of us reviewed it and realized it needed to be tweaked still, but I would say, from my perspective, I think the timeline needs to be part of this document as well, because I think, to your point, Anna, we need to commit to what we're gonna do and, and actually get it done, and the commitment from both boards, I think, is there for that to happen. So I'm, I'm just as eager to make sure we have that timeline, some of it may be tweaked, the specifics about what we do when, when we're working with our consultant, but I think enough of us have been involved in these planning processes, certainly, those of us have been involved, and as well as Peter. I think we can look at a timeline and say, how long do we think this is going to take? Um, and have a, a substantial document that can get married to this document that we're reviewing.
There are methods to how communities do this, right, so you have, you have different elements of a comprehensive plan, um, and there is a way to organize that, and we should do that, we should, we should commit ourselves to it. I, I personally am very hesitant about asking for a quarter million dollars before we are confident that our timeline is there and that we've committed to it, um, because I look at this as a long-term project for, for planning board, for myself, and I would not want to ask for that kind of money without feeling that we have, um, we have a timeline that we are truly committed to as an, as a group. Um, the lack of it, or the lack of detail in it, and kind of saying, well, the consultant will figure out, is not, in light of how we got here, is not something I'm comfortable with.
See, I would say kind of the opposite, that I'm not comfortable with going into an ex, a very detailed plan, I know you presented that plan um, in November of last year, and we noted that it was a good amount of work that went into it, but we didn't take time or have time to discuss that timeline in any detail. Um, so whether it's a timeline that the planning board is interested in or not, I, I can't say, because it was never discussed. I'm more interested, I'm more interested in a.
We actually voted on it in February.
I'm more interested, I think we voted on, um, that we were interested in pursuing, uh, a, a comprehensive plan in general, and sending a letter to the select board, um.
Well, the, the, the information that was sent, that we saw did have a detailed timeline, whether you guys voted, I don't know.
I'm just noting that we didn't discuss it in any detail, we didn't go down a two-page list.
We're now six months, we're six months further along, so we have to adjust that.
What I'm saying is that, um, I think in the time that we have, which is three weeks before town meeting, and unless we want to wait until Springtown meeting to, to ask for this funding, right, I think by all, by all accounts so far, we were saying, we gotta get going, we need to use this potential housing moratorium to actually timeline ourselves, and so waiting for, to spring to, to even ask for funding is a waste of a half a year. So that we need to get going on, so in that way, to me, it kind. So, in that way, to me, it kind of says, let's get a, let's get a simple timeline that we can be comfortable with, because we don't know all the details, nor do we have time to get there in three weeks. In, and enrich that timeline as we go along. That would be my, that would be my strategy.
Do you think the planning board can come back with something in a short timeframe that just would pass the work?
I mean, I recall that we actually voted for this specific document.
But you have, you already have, Anna has constructed something.
I mean, to me, it's a cut and paste.
You can shift over, you know, the timeframes, at least there's a framework there to work from. I mean, I, you know, clearly, your board needs to get together and talk about this. And I suspect, my gut sense is, we're going to support the timeframes to timelines, because I think it's, you know, it needs to match up with this two-year period of time. So, you know, it's-
I mean, to me, it's a cut and paste. We voted for a document in February. Now, we've had this collaborative effort where we have refined the overall strategy and we're so close, where all we need to do at this point is look at the timeline Michael has prepared, look at the date, time of the moratorium, and take a look at literally a section of what we had voted on as a planning board and create a proposal for you tomorrow night that would timeframe this out relative to the specific areas of the plan. I would think we, as a planning board, can pull it off tomorrow.
So, I have a question for-
So, Michael needs to-
Yeah, just one quick question though, Michael. Are we planning, or Brandy, are we planning to present the comprehensive plan to town meeting in November?
Not presenting a comprehensive plan.
The, the plan for-
The discussion.
We're requesting the funding for it.
Yeah, and a couple of things, just with regards to the timeline. I think it's really important for the reasons stated that, you know, there should be a commitment in terms of the date that we get this finished. Right? And I think that's, again, for all the reasons that have been stated, I think that's important. But I think it probably would be good to keep those guidelines general. And, you know, this is when we'd like to have a baseline report finished and, you know, this is when we want to have a first draft finished. And when the consultant gets on board, letting them know, and actually, as part of the RFP process, letting them know, this is our expectation for when these things happen. And then work with them to help, you know, fill in the gaps and fill in the details. Because, you know, the only person that has really done a few of these that's part of this group is Pete. And I think Pete has said before that the consultant is critical in helping us develop a realistic and thorough plan. So, that's point number one. Point number two is, I don't want to, I don't want us to feel pressured and rushed because of a two-year moratorium. We can extend that moratorium if we need to. You know, I think two years is plenty of time to get a comprehensive plan done, but, you know, I don't want us to feel rushed, like we're trying to squeeze something in before, you know, the clock runs out.
And the whole thing about town meeting is, if we allocate these funds, it doesn't, it doesn't mean we have to use them starting in January. Like, it's not, you know, like if we, if we're still working on the plan and working with the consult, like, you know, we're going to, like, this is, this is-
The funding has been provided whenever you want to start using it, that it's readily available to you. You don't have to start, you know, in May, because we just, the funding was provided to us all, or in November.
Well, and- Just, yes, I actually pretty much agree with that, but I think in this case, we've had people expressed the need to have a structure when we go to town meeting. So, I think, I think, I think it is important, well, you know, we're going to, or you're going to present it, I'm not sure exactly how much we're going to say about it, but presumably, the more we can say about it, probably the better. And I like the idea of at least having a timeline to present, or whether we present it or not, but an agreed-upon timeline that can be changed due to reality or things, maybe we call it a proposed timeline, but we're nevertheless committed to it within reason. And that's kind of what we're going to town meeting with to get this process started. And, you know, off the top, I think the timelines we've looked at, whether your version or Anna's original, or the other, all seem reasonable. And I think it'd be good, my suggestion is that the planning board come back to us with something they agree on and we go with it, you know?
That's a great way to get the public motivated, just because people in the community will see that we're committed to a specific timeframe. If we're thinking with the precinct approach for participation, that can be presented at town meeting. If the public sees, oh, they're going to be dealing with transportation in such and such time, that gets them thinking about what part of it do they want to be part of? Where do they want to volunteer? Where, what matters to them?
It's a buy-in.
Exactly. So, we should not just show up and be like, well, we have a general timeline. We should come up with as many details as we can so that the public is motivated to be part of it. That's what this is. We're asking for money and for participation.
So, I, the only thing I would caution with putting so much out there before we actually bring on a consultant is that, that we're going to need the experts. We're going to need to lean heavily on whoever we bring on to help guide us through what, like, because honestly, you know, I'm looking at, I'm looking at what Michael had put together and, you know, obviously, the planning board needs to discuss it. But, you know, I think, I think more, I think the generality for town meeting is what we need for this particular town meeting, because we're going to be probably coming back to town meeting with updates kind of continuously. So, you know, we have our consultant in place, we're going to be starting the outreach, we're going to be pulling people in for a steering committee. And we can talk about some of that. But I would, I would caution saying, we're going to do transportation in March, or, you know-
We're not going to be able to give, like, a precise date. Like, hey, March 1, we're going to talk about transportation. But I, but we, it's a two-year project, right? Where typically, it's not rocket science. Most communities spend the first year data gathering and the second year work drafting, right? And people draft it typically, multiple sections are being worked on at the same time by numerous groups. The public needs to know that. The public needs to understand how this works in most communities and a general concept of when will their issue that's important to them be heard, generally.
I think it's a matter of someplace in between that timeline and a two, two-to-three-page timeline, right? It needs to be something that's readily consumed at a town meeting on a screen.
Yeah.
I think it can be less than a page.
So, so that, so that, it's, like I said, so it's on a screen. It's someplace in between that and that, where you can see the places where-
I couldn't agree more.
People are going to participate.
We're not going to take a five-page document.
And that way, it'll be where people can actually understand and envision themselves as part of it.
We'll put Peter in charge of all this.
I'd like, I see Kate up there. As I mentioned earlier, Kate did send an email, because she didn't think that she would get on this meeting. She didn't send it to the entire group for open meeting law reasons, but if, Kate, if you are there and able to explain some of your points, I think it'd be better coming from you than from me trying to explain your document.
Kate, you're still muted.
I don't, I don't know if she's even in a place where she can-
There she is.
There she is.
I don't know if you can hear me?
We can, yep.
Okay. I'm driving, so I could potentially make the nine PM that I said I could, but, so, I-
She's driving and talking.
I really do have concerns about, like, the, having this process steered by the consultant. And I feel like not doing some real roll-up-your-sleeves work before we get money might very well be a mistake.
Is there, is there a difference between that and getting the money and not using it until we have some things in place?
Well, yes, but that's not what I see us talking about right now. Yes, it absolutely is, but that's where I'm, I feel very, very strongly about having a spelled-out process, because what the lightest that I recall was, it was starting right away to write an RFP for a consultant. And I started realizing, and based on conversations with a person who was involved in the plan we're sort of modeling as well, that that may not be the best way to go. And then I think that the potential moratorium changed my thinking about this. That has not been decided. I think the moratorium probably won't be supported by our town, but we can, it still doesn't line up, right? Because it's a two-year moratorium and it's two years to do this. And that's great, but that doesn't give us a way to react to the moratorium. So, our whole thinking potentially has to be changed about how to work this process around the moratorium, if the moratorium happens and our community wants that. And that's my concern. This, this all came late and this is great, but like, I do not feel like what's, right now, that I think we're going to be voting on is lined up to that. And that's my concern.
I guess I see the system as a lot more flexible than that. I see working with a consultant, at least in my experience, working with various consultants that I do in my, in my own profession, is that I'm really working with them towards, as a team, towards kind of a product, their expertise and what I am looking for, say, from my point of view as a designer, in order to reach a goal that, that meets all the, you know, all the qualifications that we want in the project. And so, I guess I don't, I guess I'm viewing that consultant in a different way. And, and I'm also seeing the, the timeline of the moratorium and the comprehensive plan, that the moratorium almost is going in place to give us a chance to get this comprehensive plan going and to get some results out of it. So, that almost tells me, okay, if we, if the moratorium goes forward, we, we've got to get moving, you know? And that doesn't mean we shouldn't have discussions, which I think would happen naturally in any case, before writing an RFI or an RFP, because I don't see how you can write one of those without having a discussion.
The, just to follow up on that in regards to the concern of, you know, getting a consultant too quickly, when we had our last discussion, I had mentioned that we're going to be potentially voting this and hopefully getting it at town meeting on November 16th. We're not, from my experience, we're not going to have an RFP written or we don't want to put it out before the holidays, right? We're not going to put something out there in the middle of January, because no one's looking at it. So, that gives us a little time to finalize and tweak and maybe get some of these other things that people are concerned about in place. Because I would, I would suggest that if we, you know, if the funding passes at town meeting, that at the next meeting of the select board and the planning board, the two members that are going to represent each of those boards gets voted on and decided. And that the project team start doing a little work in November and December, so that the work has started. We put the word out there to the community in, at the town meeting that we're looking for people to participate, so maybe, and then the steering committee can get done. So, I personally am not looking to start spending money the day after town meeting, because we're not going to be ready to do that. I think we have to do some planning, as has been said. Do we need to do six months of planning and wait until the May town meeting? No, I personally don't think that. But I do think that there is some work that the project management team is going to be able to do to get something moving. And it's going to be until January or February before the RFP may even go.
So, just, Peter Matzek is on as well and I was just, we haven't, Pete, we haven't heard from you. I just, you know, you've, you've had, you've had quite a bit of experience doing comprehensive plans. Does this, does this seem to be consistent with, with the process that you followed? Anything that you particularly want to add?
No. Excuse me. No, I think this is following the correct process. You know, I think, you know, we need to outline what we're going to do, obviously, and I think we've done that fairly, you know, brilliant and in depth, obviously, through the many meetings. But, you know, I think the biggest piece next is to, obviously, get the funding, number one. But then, number two, is going to be to get the consultant on board, right? And no matter how much you can plan something regarding the timeline for such a, you know, such a long, you know, twenty-four-month process, things are going to change, right? There are going to be bumps in the road and the community and the steering committee are going to have to, you know, work around situations and issues that arise. So, I think, you know, getting the funding, yes, working on the RFP is the next step. But then also getting the consultant on board. And the consultant's also, you know, in my eyes, is going to drive a big piece of the timeline. You know, but as they, you know, have the input and obviously, as they want to also strategically, as a professional planners, you know, develop and run the plan itself and the development of the plan. Like Anna says, the first year is typically focused on data, data development, data analyzation, and really public outreach. And so, that is the key first step, but it does need input from the consultant.
So, just, Pete, from your perspective, so, you know, the document that we were reviewing tonight, which kind of has sort of a pared-down version of the comprehensive plan project that we had initially put together. If we were to take this and give this to a consultant, obviously, we'd have to go through an RFP process and definitely define a lot more than what we have here for scope of work. But this would give us a good starting point with the consultants? As far as then kind of doing a much more drill down, what this is going to look like and what is, you know, what's entailed in that process?
Hundred percent.
Okay.
Chair. You know, what we are completed is the fundamental foundation for the plan and if we do turn this over, I have full confidence in any consultant would be able to, you know, take the ball and run. But, yes, we have formed the fundamental, we are forming the fundamental building deck for the master plan.
Okay. Michael, did you-
Yeah, just, Kate, I don't know if you were on when I talked about the, the fact that we really shouldn't let the moratorium kind of dictate too much, our timeframe, because the moratorium could be extended if we needed to. But I also want to reiterate, you mentioned something about having the consultant steer the process. And I think we're all concerned about that and that's something that we don't want. I mean, we don't want a consultant that comes in and looks at our watch and tells us what time it is. You know, we, we want to be the entity that, that will says, okay, these are our broad commitments to the, to the community as to when we're going to get certain things done and you need to work with us to help figure that out. So, I think, like I said, broad, you know, some of those broad timelines or broad dates and deadlines are certainly critical and we should probably incorporate that when we're going through the RFP process, you know, to any, you know, potential proposer. But, yeah, that was the point I wanted to make.
Well, so, I, I see that moratorium as more critical than maybe it seems like most people, because if we're, if we're done with the plan in two years and that could turn into whatever, based on a lot of things, and we all get it, there's reasons to change. The plan does not get us any, like, zoning changes that to be implemented. So, so I, that's my critical thing. Like, is there a way to be creative and smart about this and say, these sections are very likely to be critical to the moratorium? Let's focus on these, including the implement, the strategic and implementation. And I honestly don't know if we're saying the strategic plan is the same as implementation. I, maybe it is, maybe it isn't. And I would like to see an implementation group as part of this whole thing that we never got to talk about. And I'm not sure that we have to, for the proposal vote on, but I, I just can't see doing all this work and not being able to take advantage of the moratorium. That's one of my biggest concerns. And the consultant, I'm happy to hear you say that, Michael, because, I mean, I did spend time talking to a key person on the Wellesley Unified and, I mean, that message got very loud and clear. Be careful what you're doing with consultants. And this comes from someone serving a long time in government as well, just a general, a general thing. And I think that we can, see our neighbors in Southboro, they said, we didn't really like what we got. Let's do it ourselves. So, so it's a real concern, even though everybody says I've had experience working with consultants. It's, if I'm the only one, I'm still going to say, it's a real concern. And, and that's why this whole having the process ironed out slash timeline is, to me, is critical.
I mean, I would, I would mirror those statements. I think for me, I go back to the basics, which is that this, this kind of large, superbly detailed plan, for the plan, that the planning board voted on in February, is a very good document. Because the planning board, I recall multiple discussions, whether in retreats or in meetings about it. board, I recall multiple discussions, whether in retreats or in meetings about it. Um, and I think there is a lot of depth to it. Now, we don't need to hand that over as the final document because every town is different, every community is different. The, once we start working on it, it may, we may speed up in certain sections, slow down in other sections. I get all that. On the other hand, there is something to be said for a very thorough, detailed process that we are thoughtful about, that shows the public, the priority of certain elements, why they're happening in a certain order, and brings the public forward, right? Um, and it gets us thinking together as to the kind of consultant we need. Because maybe this community would benefit from a consultant that has specific types of expertise, not just any consultant who can do this, but a certain consultant that might need to come in, for example, with expertise in public data gathering, or expertise in a particular kind of development that we as a community are most concerned about right now, right? Maybe the multi, the multifamily, the multi apartment communities that seem to be such a concern in our community. So, um, I, I do feel like the devil's in the details. Without the details, I, I have some concerns about this.
I, I think that's all that's great and all that's valid. All those points are valid. But the fact is, we have three weeks, or we wait six months. You know, so that's the bottom line. Is it, is this comprehensive plan, is it really important that we start right away? Or is it not?
I'm not disagreeing. We started a year ago.
But I'm talking about town meeting. I'm talking about the vote for the funding. That is what I'm talking about. Is that happening in three weeks? Or is it not happening in three weeks?
I think tomorrow.
It's on the warrant and we're approving it tonight. We're closing it tonight. So, so it will be on, be a town meeting.
So that to me says, we are moving forward. We will need to add in details. We will not be able to get it perfect, um, before the town meeting. But we will have a good starting place. With the, with the strength of the personalities on this board, I can't imagine us being bullied by a consultant. In fact, they may run screaming from Ashland after meeting the two boards. I'm not sure. Um, so, I mean, this is, this is, the whole comprehensive plan, obviously, is something that was not brought up by me. But now we're into it. I see the value of it. I have always seen the value of it. I just personally didn't have the capacity to do it. So I think we just need to get it done. And there's going to be some bumps in the road.
Yep.
But if we're dedicated, as Yolanda knows, there's bumps in the road. If we're dedicated to getting it done, then we get it done. But we can't get caught up on this has to be perfect and that has to be perfect. Because it's not going to happen.
Doesn't work in the real world.
It's not going to happen.
So in the, so in the interest of time, because I know we're kind of, you know, it's almost nine o'clock. I promised a half an hour and we're not there. So I apologize for that. But, um, this has been a good discussion. It's been a really good discussion. So as far as next steps, as Steve said, we're closing the warrant tonight. So this is going to be a line item under, um, free cash. And we have a choice. We can either just have it as a line item and free cash and say, this is something we're exploring. Or we can actually start talking about this. And, you know, because, because it's not a separate warrant article. It's not something standing on its own. It's part of a package. So, you know, if, if we are all comfortable with saying that we are going to move this forward between now and spring town meeting, which I think is the case, even if it doesn't start, you know, immediately, that we kind of give some context as to what we are planning to do. Just to, you know, to Anna's point, to really start bringing the public into this. Because I think it is, we're gonna, we're gonna need, you know, we're going to be asking a lot of the town. We're asking a quarter of a million dollars. We're asking the participation, just, you know, not even including like the, the public input, but like, we're going to be looking for folks to serve on a steering committee for two years. We're going to be asking a lot of people. So I think, to Anna's point, I think it's good to give some context. I think that, um, you know, it sounds like the planning board needs to talk about the timeline, which I think is something you guys can, can, can talk about. And we have, we have time for. Um, whether or not we give a detailed timeline at town, town meeting or not, we don't have to. We, like.
You, you, you don't, Madam Chair, because a timeline can be tweaked, just like anything else. The charter review committee, we had a timeline. And I can tell you, it was changed at least 10 times.
For what? Did you have a timeline?
The charter review committee.
Okay.
It, we had a timeline for certain things that had to get done. And I can tell you, because when you have all these hands, you know, in, in the dough, guess what? It's, it's going to make, make things a little more difficult to pass.
Well, I would say, I mean, our meeting is tomorrow night. Um, this is putting really feet to the fire. But Anna, if you have a chance to put together what would become in a way, a single slide at town meeting, that shows a proposed timeline that the planning board can actually talk about in the time we will have allotted tomorrow night. I mean, maybe it's something that Kate can also take a look at, you know, to see if there's at least two people that it can kind of hash this thing out quickly back and forth. Then we might actually make some progress to having this thing, um, to discuss tomorrow night. Because we won't get through.
I have no problem doing that. I think.
Michael, did you get the opportunity? Because again, I said you had, you had sent it out and then I caught a couple of things. And did you get an opportunity to update the one that you had sent out?
I don't think I did. I had like the year wrong on a couple of things.
Yeah, there was a couple just by the, it was off by a year.
The timeline, the timeline matter, right?
Yes.
If you can send that, Michael, or resend the most recent version.
Right.
To Anna at the end of the meeting tonight. You know, maybe we'd have a very draft, something to, something to talk about tomorrow.
There was a couple of dates that I said, Michael, we, it can't be the same year. It has to be pushed out a year.
Yeah, I see, I see what you're talking about.
Right? Are you looking at it? So it, I think it worked with the conversation that we're having and the timing that we're having. It was just those one or two things. So I think that is a document. And if he can update the, those years, you guys can take a look at that.
We can take a stab at it. I mean, I, what I would envision is we'll do our best. We'll give it back to you guys. If you're on board with it, hopefully by town meeting, we have some document we can commit to.
And, and I think it's, it's a, it's a balance, right? For town meeting. We don't get a lot of time, right? And typically, when we do these free cash allocations, there is no discussion. So I think we'd have to double check with the moderator to say, we'd like to. But if you, I think if you address it for that line item, we might need to address it for all the line items, right? If we do it. So.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not necessarily sure we would have to. I mean, generally, we don't have slides or anything. But I think.
In this case.
In this case, it probably makes sense, like I said, to just give, um, an overview of what we're trying to accomplish.
Right.
And when we think we're going to accomplish it. I think that makes sense.
But I think there's a couple of things on here that people may want backup information for.
I mean, is the moratorium being discussed at town meeting?
Yeah, it's a separate warrant article.
I would think these things should be connected together. Um, because the public is going to have a lot of interest in the moratorium piece. I, I think a lot of those folks, and I don't know if some of you got that email right before this meeting that went out to Michael about somebody concerned about the moratorium with some ideas.
Yep.
I'm like, this person, whoever it is, should be, should, we should reach out to him and say, hey, welcome to the comprehensive plan process. Why don't you bring your ideas in, right?
I've already had the conversation with them. So.
Wonderful. And so to me, connecting these two things together at town meeting is key. Because the folks who are going to be interested in discussing the moratorium are exactly the people that we would want to engage in planning this particular process. So I would link them together. I would not be afraid to link them together. I think that we need to own that piece together.
It actually works out that way, Anna, because the, the warrant article with the funding is, is, is a lump article. You're voting for, one vote passes everything.
Yep.
But it, but I, I agree with you. I think it makes sense to bundle it with the moratorium.
Absolutely. Bundle the discussion. Because it just, how did we get here? We got here because we need to plan this. We need to plan our community. We need to plan our vision. We need to make sure that we don't need future moratoriums, that our resources are properly utilized. So let's engage with the public that way so that they understand the purpose of the moratorium and the, the responsibility we all have as a community, not just folks at this table, but the entire community to come together and do this right. So that we're not in this situation again.
Absolutely.
So hopefully you've got a lot on your plate tomorrow night. Hopefully you'll get to this discussion.
There's always a lot on our plate.
We'll make room for Jello.
Well, thanks for volunteering to do that again, Anna. Our being.
It's been over, I mean, I think, I think it's been a collaborative process. Um, I have to say, we do have a lot of strong personalities, but we've managed to get here. I think we're very close. Um, and in my mind, conflict is good if we, if it gets, gets us results and gets us to a good result. So.
And I would think that if they, if Michael can just change those dates and get them to the, I, I, I don't see a lot of heavy lifting on your part to adjust that timeline. Because it, to the point of, it needs to be a little bit general. And then we can make it specific in regards to when we do certain things.
I have to say, as a slide, that particular, I think Excel version may be a little hard for me to, I'm not an Excel maven by any means, nor do I think it's the right document to kind of throw up there. So I tend to be more word based. What I envision is taking this super long one and cutting a section out of it to make it less than a page of just the piece of it that handled like, oh, natural and cultural resource element, transportation element. What are the different elements? How do we put them?
I don't know that your calendar that we're going to show needs to go into that much detail at this point. I think the idea of from this time to this time, we're going to do ga, data gathering, and these are the kinds of things we're going to cover.
Sure. Some of them might be included, right?
Right? So, but not, I don't think you have to, as to your point.
I don't think we need to handle all of them.
We don't need, well, and we don't need to do any specifics in regards to when we're going to do a specific thing. Because depending on what's going on, it may make sense to say, okay, now we're going to move into transportation, or now we're gonna, and that is sort of going to be an organic thing. Yes, you're going to plan some of it, but it's going to be a little bit organic as you get information from your community.
I don't think you want to scare people from participating.
That's the other thing.
If you overload them with all sorts of, you know, in the weeds information.
Yeah, I, I'm not disagreeing. I think like Tricia said, there is a happy middle.
Yeah.
So we can find a way, I think, to find, we don't need to tie ourselves down to like every little element there is. There's a lot of elements that's going to scare people. But there are theme, there are thematic examples to the elements.
And are we presenting this plan as well at town meeting?
So that's what we're discussing. So like, we'll have to, we'll have to figure, like, so if, if we have a timeline and then we have, I mean, I'm thinking like literally two slides.
Yeah, an overview.
Yeah, just an overview of what the comprehensive plan process looks like.
So it's not this particular.
No, we're not, no, no, no. We're not getting, I don't think we get in the weeds with this. You know, this, but it's a, it's a unified project. It's a unified, it's, it's select board and planning board working together to kind of frame this and shape this. And, and it coincides, to your point, with the moratorium. Because that's, that's why we're doing a moratorium. Because we have this opportunity to do this comprehensive plan that we're, that's a priority for us.
I mean, I'll say that as, you know, as a, as a parent and a working parent and a public servant, people are really busy, right? I'm, if I'm busy, everyone else is. And so I, I do think that there's some benefit to airing out for the public some of the elements. Because people are interested in certain things. There are people in the public who are very dedicated to the environment. There are folks who are very dedicated to public transportation. You can think of who they are in the community. You probably know who they are. And so I, I agree that we don't want to be in the weeds. But I think we need to get the public excited, that the things that they're excited about are going to be part of this. Um, and it's, it's a way to get them involved.
I think that's, I think that's the simplest saying. I think that's the simplest.
Should we make a motion to go beyond 10 o'clock?
Can I make a recommendation that after the planning board meets?
Yeah.
That either Brandy or I'm willing to, that we, you know, determine what that slide is going to be?
We will. Yeah.
I'm willing to help with that.
We can figure that out. We meet, we meet on the ninth before, um, you know, a week before town meeting. So.
We also meet before town meeting.
Right.
Yeah, but we can't wait until the meeting, the night of town meeting.
But I'm just saying, we have some time.
I mean, ideally, we would want that to be collaborative effort.
Right.
Right. But, but I don't think all 10 of us need to be sitting and doing that. I think chairs plus one other person or, you know, whatever.
Well, we'll, we'll figure, we'll figure. I, I have, I have confidence that we can figure out a couple of slides. So, um, but, so outside of town meeting, um, and that you guys are going to get the, the timeline looked at tomorrow, um, we will need to kind of start thinking about things like our project management team and start, um, reaching out to folks who may be interested in, in, um, you know, boards and committees for the steering committee and, and also residents. Because to your point, Anna, I think as soon as we're, we get the funding mechanism, I think we do need to kind of start, start reaching out to people and getting people together. So that if we are kind of in a place where, say January, we're going to be drafting this RFP, we have our team in place that's kind of ready to rock, I would say, right? Does that sound?
Yeah.
Does that sound good to everyone that's on Zoom? I don't mean to forget about the people that are on Zoom. So Deepa and Kate and Pete, does that sound about right? Okay.
Kate unmuted herself. I don't know if she had something else to say.
Kate, we see you're off. Did you have something else you wanted to add?
Uh, no, I, I appreciate everyone being thoughtful. I mean, I think all, I think everyone knows me. I care a lot about process. And when we talked about recruiting people, like, I think we are going to have to do some recruiting, but I'd like to see a process of how that all works too. And that, that is not muddying for town meeting. I'm just saying, like, those are my continued concerns about the whole thing.
Okay.
Right? We, we have to spell out processes for things.
I agree. Okay.
All right. So that you guys can move on.
I was going to say, do you guys have anything else that?
I don't have anything else.
Get your work cut out for you, I think, tomorrow.
Okay, I'll go home and go to sleep then. Um, so I will make a motion that we close our meeting at 9:07.
We'll second it.
And a roll call vote.
Deepa, aye.
Anna Tesmaniski, aye. Kate, your turn.
Oh, yeah, I didn't, because I didn't start it. I wasn't.
I'll just say, Tricia Kendall, aye. Oh, yeah. So, in any case, there's a quorum. So we are out of here, leaving you, you people to continue.
Thank you guys.
Thank you guys. We appreciate it, especially knowing that you, like, this is, this is additive to, to your crazy week. So. Yeah. You can come sit next to me anytime. All right. Thank you, guys. Yeah, good luck.
Good luck. We'll, we'll come and visit and ask questions.
Well, we can't call it the Rob effect anymore.
Yeah, right.
All right. Thank you, guys. All right. So that was a good discussion. Um, so moving on in our agenda, we, a motion to close and oppose the special town meeting warrant for November 16th, 2022. Well, no, let's discuss. Let's discuss. Let's, I know, I know we're, no, I know, no, no. I, I feel you, Joe. I totally feel you. Um, so.
Let's talk about the comprehensive plan.
I think we're good. I think we're good. Um, so, Michael, is there anything that we want to specifically, um, do we want to just go through the, the warrant articles and see if there's any questions before we do this or discussion?
Yeah, I, I think that would be prudent. Um, you know, Article One, the free cash transfer. So that's one that we've been discussing already, um, that allocates $80,000 to the stabilization fund, $533,000 to the OPEP trust fund, deferred capital for $806,000.
What is that?
So with our capital plan, um, so we fund part of it during the spring town meeting.
You say deferred from May.
Yeah, from May town meeting.
Because now you know the number.
Right. Um, $188,000 towards the Valentine barn, uh, $250,000 for the Mendez school project, and then $250,000 for the comprehensive plan.
And you guys, somebody's going to talk about the Bendez school. What is that, an overrun?
Well, so it was spurred by needing to put more money into the project. So from a timing perspective, so you know how similarly we said with the public safety building that we felt that it was incumbent upon us to find some money within our own budget to help supplement and, and pay for that? Mendez, in the school department, felt that that was, um, you know, a responsibility of theirs for the Mendez school. So instead of, you know, the best way to do it was to let $250,000 in the school department budget go to free cash with the understanding that it would be appropriated at the annual town meeting. So, or the fall town meeting, for the Mendez school. Does that answer your question, Rob?
Well, I, I don't understand. Is this, is this to replace funds that were already used in the project? Is that what?
No, it's to contribute funds to the project budget.
Right, directly. But what's, what's that to do with the rest of what you said about the?
It's from the school.
Due to cost overruns.
Yeah.
Right, some, some.
No, but it, but it was the, the school, the way I understand it, school, schools gave this money back as free cash at the end of the fiscal year, right? And now we're just placing it right back in.
All right. Now I get it. Okay, thanks.
Um, Article Two is the property tax exemptions. Um, I have not, Board of Assessors vote is coming up. So it went to, okay. So it's going to be 11 and a quarter percent. Um, I need to figure out what the dollar amount that translates to. Do you have that one? Okay. So, so we'll have a dollar, I mean, what's voted on is the percentage, but we'll have the dollar amount. Um, Article Three. Article Three is, uh, the amend the demo delay bylaw. I did send this to, you know, the version that's in the warrant. I did send it to Helen and Jim of the Historical Commission, made sure that it was, it was good. They were okay with that. Just in general, I, I will say that, uh, the Historical Commission, which now includes Helen and Joan, um, took into account a lot of the feedback that they had received at the previous town meeting and has incorporated that. We've gone over this in detail before with Helen here. I thought Helen was supposed to be here tonight, but I see Joan's here.
Joan is on, yeah. So Joan, I don't know if, um, if, uh, you wanna, if there's anything specific that you want, you want to add?
I'm actually here. Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, Helen. You're coming up as, you're coming up as Jen Ball.
Hey, hey, Jen.
I've been here all night.
We were actually wondering
Yeah.
who that second Jen Ball was, so, um, so welcome. Is, is there anything specific you would like to, to, to add to this?
No, actually, I, I, I just wanna say that we, um, we did come and get feedback. It, it really worked out nicely. I think, um, you know, we were able to address some of the concerns, but also we were able to include some things that otherwise, uh, we might not have thought about. And so I think it actually made it better, uh, once we got everyone's feedback, we got, uh, from the planning board and from the select board. You know, and I, and I think it's, it's been made better because of all the feedbacks.
Well, that's great. Great. And thank you for, for all your work on this, 'cause I know it's been a, been a long process, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have anything else on the demo?
No.
No, we're good. Does anybody else have any questions, comments? Okay. Go ahead, and we'll keep moving.
Um, Article Four is, uh, accepting the gift parcel on Nancy Drive slash Elliott Street. Uh, that's from Bob Skiyavi, and it ties into the Catholic paint project that we're doing. Article Five is adopting a specific provision from, for the Brave Act, um, which, uh, provides exemptions, tax exemptions for our veterans. Veterans benefits, rights, appreciation, validation, and enforcement. That's what constitutes brave. Um, all this does is it allows, um, it allows us, uh, properties that are be in a trust. It allows, it makes them part of the process or allows them to be part of the process.
So we've had the Brave Act for, for a while, right? So this is a new component to it.
It's a new component. Before, you couldn't, um,
Something in trust.
Right, wouldn't, wouldn't qualify. Um, Article Six is to, uh, fund improvements to the middle school ball fields, uh, in the amount of a hundred and eighty-five thousand. And then Article Seven is the temporary multi-dwelling building moratorium, uh, so that would be amending our zoning laws. Uh, we have discussed this before. I don't think I have to read the whole article. I don't think that's necessarily the case. But, um, I know that there is, um, there's some interest in discussing the specifics of it tonight.
Yeah, so we had, um, received an email from John Dudley, who's a business owner and resident here in town, with, with the thought around whether it would make sense to increase the number of units under the, the moratorium. You know, I, I, I was thinking, I'm like, the, to me, it kinda, I mean, he suggested twenty-five. I don't, I think, I think that's, personally, I think that's pretty high.
Right.
Um, you know, I'm thinking south of ten is like my thought, but it kind of triggered something for me personally because we were talking about the Affordable Housing Trust too, and if there was a project, could the Affordable Housing Trust do small projects that, you know, whether it's Olive Street or, or otherwise, where, you know, and if it was, if we had a moratorium in place that would prohibit that, then it would apply to affordable housing too. So, um, so I think, I think it is worth a discussion if, um, so, so Yolanda?
So I actually had the opportunity to speak to John, and actually, that's partly what prompted his email. Uh, he had reached out to me directly to talk about this. And as he said in his email, we're not trying to stop all development. We are trying to look at larger scale developments that will have a larger impact on our community, like Hundred Chestnut Street, like five oh one Pond Street. But we've had some great small projects over the last ten years that have done wonderful things for our community. Bagel Table, twenty-one Main Street, right? There were some people who were a little hesitant at first, but the apartments are filled, the, the, the retail is filled, and it's a great little building. One twenty-eight Main Street. Now, that's not a great example because there are still people who hate it and wish we hadn't done it, and there are people who love it. But that's, I think, sixteen units. And then we now have a great new business who is thriving here in Ashland. And yes, we're looking at only having this for two years, but I think just allowing multifamily of two to three units, to John's point, I think, is something we need to consider. And there's this infill development. There are other parcels here in downtown that we may wanna look at or that a developer may wanna look at. And if it's a complete moratorium from three or less, some of those won't be looked at. And as we know, some of these projects have been reviewed and discussed for a long time. So to have it only be allowed for three units or less, I think, is almost a detriment. You're saying that you think twenty-five is too high? I think twenty or twenty-five would make sense, but again, it's with some of our current zoning. It's not, we're, we're not trying to change everything, but I think if we do three or less, we are doing our community a disservice for people who have already been starting to look at things. Not the hundred units or two hundred units, but some, some of these small infill projects that could be beneficial to people who wanna stay in town and who wanna do workforce housing.
Just a question. Where does the, uh, he said John, I think, said four, but I'm looking at this, where, where is that, where's the number of units in this moratorium? Or is it just somewhere else in the zoning?
Yeah, I don't see it either in, in the actual, shall prohibit any development for which building permit has not been issued for any new multifamily dwelling project or any mixed use project which includes multifamily dwellings. It doesn't give any, any specific.
Figures.
Figure.
So a multifamily dwelling is defined as being three or more units on one lot.
So that's where, so there's no.
So three or more on one lot.
Leads the definition. So I, you know, I, I read, uh, John's email as well, and, and to me, and, and I mentioned this to Michael after I read it, I mean, it certainly is deserving of a, of a discussion. He used downtown as his example for infill dwellings. And he specifically talked about the Kramer Building. He, he referred to it as Nick's Pizza. And to me, that's a, you know, prime example of, of, of a property that's, that is primed for redevelopment. And, um, to go to your point, like a Bagel Table or a one twenty-eight Main Street. So, um, you know, I'm not sure what the right number of units would be if we were to modify this. But it would be less than twenty-five. It would probably be more, in my mind, more like twelve. I'm looking at the Bagel Table has nine. One twenty-eight's got sixteen, you know, so ten, twelve seems to me to, would be workable in a, in a, in a space like that.
I guess we also have to consider not just downtown, right? There are other, if possible, infill parcels that maybe twenty units, right? If it's, um, depending on where it is and what it is, and so I.
Well, I, I'm, again, the twenty-five is, is, I think, uh, just not my compromise. It would be more, you know, a, a smaller number to, to, uh, you know, just thinking about that specific, uh, property.
And also just what we're trying to do, which is to really kind of understand what the impact of projects in general that we have in the pipeline is gonna have on like infrastructure. And so if we, if, you know, I think of twenty-five as not a small project at all. So I think of, I think of ten as a, you know, small project. You know, John made a great point. Like, it was, it was, you know, I, I think his, his, his perspective is, is very valuable. Um, you know, this only is a two-year moratorium. This isn't a permanent thing that we're looking to do, so you know, if, if, um, if there are developers that are looking to do twenty-five or bigger projects, you know, that I'm, me personally, I'm okay telling them that, that, you know, that they can wait out the two years. But smaller projects, I think, are, I think are.
But even, but even small projects take, can take time to, I mean, what did, how long did one twenty-eight Main Street take from the start of permitting to, so?
Nine months to a year.
What's that?
Nine months to a year.
Nine months to a year. And this doesn't prevent anybody from putting in a permit.
Putting in an application.
An application, right? Not receiving a permit, but they can put in an application and, uh, and be in the queue, so to speak. But, uh, how would this be modified, I guess?
So that's a good point. Um, so I did talk to town council today, and I, I talked about, or I asked the question, if somebody, if we wanted to modify this to in, you know, increase the unit count, could that be done as an, as an amendment on town meeting floor? And town council's opinion was that, yes, it could be because it would be less restrictive. Now, we can't make the change here tonight because, yeah, right, because, um, the planning board has already advertised the hearing, the public hearing for this on November tenth, and it's been with this language. And so we can't change it right now, but it can be amended on, on town meeting floor.
Can it be brought up at the planning board meeting on November tenth? I mean, I know their hearing is on this, but.
It can't be, it can't be amended.
Can be amended, but it could be brought up and discussed to see the response from the planning board.
It could be. And I think, you know, one of the things this board might wanna consider is, you know, do you want to spend time and try to come to an agreement on what a preferred unit count would be, so you would have like a, a position that you could present as a select.
I would ask, you know, I, I would suggest that we have, agree on a, on a number and have town council maybe draft us language that we would present as an amendment on the town meeting floor.
I guess my only question is, do we need some guidance or thought about how to determine the number? Like, we're at ten to twenty-five? You know, what, you know, is anybody, do we have any recommendations or guidelines for that, or is it just something we just kinda, kinda go with?
No, I mean, it's going to be an arbitrary number.
It is, yeah.
You know, I think, 'cause there's no hard and fast, you know, counts or really data that we can utilize to guide it. I mean, what we're trying to do is take a break so we can determine some of those data points.
Would any of this weaken our legal position? Like, is there a certain, like, could someone say, well, you're, you're, you're approving this twelve-unit project? You know?
Lisa didn't think so.
Okay.
Lisa did not think that that would be the case.
She didn't think that was biased in any way, uh, with respect to, you know, another developer coming and said, well, you know, this particular piece of property will hold fifteen. You know, so I'm three over, so you're telling me I can't build because I'm three over? You know, you can't give any exceptions to the rule? I mean, that opens up Pandora's Box again with respect to the moratorium and how, and how strong the moratorium really is going to be effective.
Well, it, I mean, so it's a zoning change that would, to pass, would need two-thirds vote at town meeting.
Town meeting, okay.
So, and I'm sure developers are not happy with a lot of zoning changes that get passed in communities, but it doesn't necessarily give them a legal argument to, to fight it.
So if a developer decides that he's gonna build individual homes
Mm-hmm.
on a piece of property?
That's not multifamily.
No.
It would be.
It would be multifamily. Okay.
So here's a good example, is the Lanterns.
Yep.
The Lanterns is actually a condo community, even though they're detached. For all intents and purposes, they look like detached single-family homes. They're all on the same lot.
Right, so that would be considered.
So that would be considered single family, a single unit, yeah, well.
Depending on affordable housing when you're looking at it. So maybe it's more a number of twenty, right? So it's not quite the twenty-five, or it's, you know, twenty and below, or twenty-one, you know, something like that, rather than the ten or the twelve.
Yeah. What if it's just mixed use as opposed to multifamily?
It's, it applies to any mixed use project that has a multifamily component.
Okay. Got you.
Right, so depending on, yeah, mixed use.
Yeah.
And the way things are looking at right now with respect to affordable units and the projects that we were looking at and trying to, trying to do, I mean, it's gonna take at least a year and a half to close to two. So by that time, who knows what, where the moratorium is going to be or if we extend or whatever.
Do you have any numbers, Joe, on what you're looking at?
Well, we have a couple, we have a couple of things, and, and one of them is, you know, Kramer's property, and the other one is the Olive Street.
Are they twelve units?
Uh, well.
Twenty-five?
One, one was eighteen, the other was twenty. So, and again, but those were individual homes and, you know, type of deal. Over here wasn't. They were, you know, they were, you know, multi, multi-use, you know, commercial on the bottom and, you know, apartments on the side.
We have a meeting on the ninth before town meeting. You know, I don't know. I think we're, we're gonna be, it's like throwing a dart, whether it's ten or twelve, or eight or sixteen. Uh, but maybe that would give us, if we throw this on the next agenda again to review, it'll give us enough time to, you know, if we decide on a number, then we can ask, uh, town council to present some language for us. If that makes sense?
And that gives us enough time before the regular, uh, fall meeting, right, to do it? Okay. I'm more partial to twelve, but.
You're partial to what?
Twelve.
Well, I think if we have someone reaching out to us who has a concern, let's.
You know, Yolanda, I, you know, you had a conversation with John. I, I'd ask you to have another one and say, John, you know, what's, what's feasible in, in some place like that? I mean, he's a, he's, he's a developer. He knows this stuff. He's been on the planning board.
But also say we can reach out to other people who we know are developers in town and see what they're looking at and considering.
Right, ask him that question.
But, but, you know, I just caution that, like, you know, a developer is always gonna go high. Like, it's always, you know, so if we're, I would, I would not want us to, to craft a moratorium based on what developers are, are asking. But John's, John, John made a good point, and I think, and I think we need, and I think all of us are talking about it in some way that we can work with it.
And, and also realize, we put the moratorium in, and, and this might not be the correct terminology, almost as a knee-jerk, right? We're seeing all these large numbers come before us, and we're saying, wait a minute, we, we need to stop and see what we're doing. And so we said, okay, no multifamily. And then we talked about it at our last meeting, and now people have watched our last meeting, and they're understanding what this means, and people are starting to reach out. I, I don't expect that John will be the only one. I expect other people in town, either positive or negative, will come back to us and say, yeah, that's, you know, yeah, that's great, no building. Well, that's not realistic either, right? We need to find the balance, and we, you know, I'm actively gonna reach out to other people who I know have developed in town to say, if this happens, what could work and, or would you just say, you know what, I'm not gonna come develop and spend my money in Ashland, right? That's another concern.
I, I would also say we're, you know, we're starting this comprehensive plan process, and I don't wanna take this moratorium and make it so big that there's huge holes in it.
Restrictive.
While we're trying to start a comprehensive plan process where
I understand.
we're saying, okay, what, you know, how do we want our downtown to be? What the, what is, what does the zoning look like on one twenty-six that we should, that we should focus on? And then have ten projects of twenty-five units come down one twenty-six. So, you know, I, I, I hear John. I think, I think he has a very valid concern. I just caution that for, for us, that crafting a moratorium and, and, and putting that unit count at a high level just negates what we're trying to do.
Well, I don't, you know, again, I think, I think the bulk of us don't wanna see the twenty-five number as a benchmark. But, you know, I think, you know, in fairness to, uh, you know, somebody like John, he's a developer, he's a business owner.
Absolutely.
You know, he's invested a lot into this community. I think he's, and I think he's got valid information that he, he can share, you know? It's, it's not that we're crafting something specifically for, uh, for him or for any developer.
Or any other developer.
But, you know, it's, it's, uh, you know, I, I think we're doing ourselves a disservice by not amending this in some way.
No, I think we agree on that. While we're talking about getting developers' points of view, I think as, as we were talking about Brandy, you know, we expect also to hear from everyday citizens about, you know, what they kinda think. They've all experienced like the Bagel Table and one twenty-eight Main and the other project on one twenty-six, so, you know, people will have opinions as well about. So, you know, people will have opinions as well about what's a, what's a project. Some of those projects weren't that big and still had a number of issues, so.
But, you know, I think what's a, it would be great if John showed up and was able to articulate what the consequences were from a developer's standpoint, and be able to present clearly what that means. Because I think, to your point, Rob, everybody's gonna come in and say, yeah, we love the bagel table. Yeah, we love, you know, cross, crossroads, um-
Or we don't love it, and it was too big.
Right, or, but they're gonna, but I think a lot of people are gonna say, we just don't like the residential component of it. So we like the commercial component, we don't like the residential component. And again, there has to be an education component that, you know, links the fact that you need to have a residential, uh, piece that would subsidize that commercial.
You support the commercial.
And this, and this is what's gonna be presented at town meetings. So if we're going to present an alternative motion, it has to be, it has to be substantiated. And my, my thought is it can't deviate drastically from this, because it won't pass.
I think it's just gonna be a number, right? So instead of saying no multifamilies, right, anything that's a multifamily, so that's three units or higher, I think it'll say anything more than this amount or higher-
Yeah.
Would be, would be the moratorium for two years. You know, and then the other pieces, remember, we also still have our sewer moratorium on, right? So even if we decide to change this to, you know, fifteen, twenty, twen-, you know, wherever people are comfortable-
That's interesting.
Then we still have a sewer moratorium for the next five months. So that could impact what people do and when as well, they go hand in hand.
Yeah. I suspect there'll be a lot of interest, um, as our downtown project gets completed and, uh, becomes a much more attractive, uh, location for, for both businesses and, and for, for, uh, people to live.
Right.
We're gonna see more interest, and the same thing on Pond Street. Forget about the, the, the five oh one and the Eden right now, I think there's other, um, you know, certainly there's lots of infill opportunities there.
And there already are people looking at it.
You know, I don't disagree with that, Stephen, I think at the same point, uh, developers will come in, take a look at the buildings that are already in town to rehab them and make them into, uh, livable, you know, locations for families and stuff. Instead of having to build new, they, you know, they repurpose buildings.
Right.
Yeah.
In the downtown area.
So unless anyone has any other further comments, what we'll do is, at our next meeting, we'll put it on the agenda, we'll see if we can come up with a number.
Yeah, meantime, we'll do some homework.
Yep, and then we need to, to vote and close.
I move that we close and post the special town meeting warrant for November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes five zero. Yep.
Just one really more like logistical and administrative point for town meeting. So we do have an ADA advisory that talks about, um, you know, in our warrant that talks about making accommodations. I just wanna be clear that that's accommodations at town meeting, so if people need headsets to hear, um, sign language, you know, that type of stuff.
Oh, okay, oh, that's good, that's great.
Will we have, will we have somebody available to sign?
So we have to, so, so on top, on the first page of the warrant, people would have to make requests, because obviously we have to do a little work to have, make sure that we can try to accommodate, to work with the person requesting accommodations to see if that, see if we can make that happen. And so the number is on, it's on the first page, deadline, and so we're not gonna have somebody there to sign.
But it won't be done in advance, so how would you know that you would need a person to sign if it's gonna be done that night?
Well, we're asking them to let us know by October.
In advance, oh, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Yes, so we'll post it on the website, it'll be part, that's posted tomorrow.
Okay.
And so it's plenty of time, so people can-
Gotcha.
I mean, make- I'm surprised no one else remembers this. There were, there were few past town meetings where there was someone doing sign language-
Yep.
At our town meetings. It's been quite a while, I think it was all the way back in the, when we did town meeting at the Mindes.
At the Mindes School.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, on the stairs.
Yep.
Speaking of town meeting, um, did we talk, we, did we talk to Kelly about childcare? Are we good to go?
We are.
We are, awesome. So we'll be able to offer childcare services at town meeting, which is good to kind of get back into that.
The other question was, people were wondering about getting rides there for seniors, that's not something-
So we reached out to, to the MWR TA to talk about that, um, and, uh, so we're still waiting to hear back from them, and I'm hoping, I'll reach out to them this week and just kind of check in.
Otherwise, I would say if you live near a senior and they wanna come to town meeting and you're going, I'd give them a ride.
Offer them a ride.
Yep.
Be neighborly.
Ride shares, Uber, there's a couple different options.
Okay. Anything else on town meeting, are we good, we're good to move on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bicycle.
Um, next thing on our agenda is trash program slash mattress program. Michael.
Okay. So I just wanted to make everybody aware of some changes to our ma- mattress program. So because of-
Thank you, Massachusetts.
Because of some state mandate, uh, new state mandate, um, mattresses have to be taken out of the, the waste stream. So currently what we have is, is we have, through waste management, um, people can have one bulky item hauled away a month. And mattresses would be included in that. So waste management has let us know that due to this change, um, they're not gonna be able to offer that anymore. Um, we did look at another company that would basically provide curbside service for mattresses, um, and it turned out it was, it was something like ninety bucks, uh, per mattress, not like a mattress and box spring, but per mattress. So that seemed prohibitively expensive. So what Dave Miller and Doug and I have talked about is, uh, setting up a new program, which is not necessarily the, the most convenient compared, currently compared to what we have. But for the time being, we would be able, we would be able to offer it free of charge still. And so that is, people can take their mattresses to DPW, and what we will do is we will have somebody come and pick it up and, you know, at one time, once per month or once every couple of weeks, and take it out. So to do that, it would cost forty-five dollars, um, a mattress. And so what David has done is he has put in for a grant and received a grant- that will allow us to basically cover that cost, at least for a year. Um, and then we'll reevaluate the program during the year, so.
So may I ask a question? Seeing that waste management is no longer gonna do that, are they going to tweak their contract figure? Because that was a special, that was a special, uh, service that they were gonna provide at a specific cost. Now that they're not doing it, are they gonna give that money, refund that money back to the town?
It was, it was projected as part of their proposal, 'cause they've known for a while, apparently, that this was happening-
This was coming down the road, okay.
So in addition to that, I know we have talked months before about the fact that we're gonna need to raise the rates in some way, shape, or form, and we've kind of kicked the can down the road as much as we can, so we're gonna have to have a, a serious discussion about that. Based on disposal costs and transportation costs, um, you know, the cost of waste disposal has just gone up immensely. And so we're gonna have to increase the fees to cover that. So we have two ways to get fees, um, obviously there's the base fee, and then there is the, um, the pay-as-you-throw bags. So I think what we'll need to decide is, do you want to put that increase in fees solely on, um, the bag purchases? On the base amount, or do you wanna do a blend of both?
Yeah. What are we talking, any idea at this point, which are?
Probably about sixty bucks.
Sixty bucks a year per, per household?
Mm-hmm.
Have we looked at ways of reducing the waste stream locally? I mean, you know, we did the plastic bag ban and all that, I mean, does sustainability have any, are there recommendations for how to reduce?
So one of the things we're really focusing on, and Samantha Riley, our sustainability coordinator, is working on, is increasing composting throughout the town. So one thing that she is working on is, uh-
People really throwing away branches and stuff?
Yeah, like, yeah, yeah, so, um, you'd be surprised.
Suppose you're in an apartment, you have limits, yeah.
But, so one of the obstacles to, um, that growing in our town is that, um, a lot of low-income residents might not have the ability to do that. So she has applied for a grant, um, which will allow us to subsidize the costs for low income-
Of the black earth compost program.
Yeah, for, for black earth compost, so, and-
That's good. What, what's our fee right now?
It's eighty-nine dollars every six months.
It's actually dropped, 'cause we just got billed for our six months, so we hit, must have hit the threshold.
Great.
So we are at sixty-nine ninety-nine.
Okay.
So-
How does that work? What do you mean?
So every six months, so basically it was a, it was a program with Holliston- Yeah, so the, the, yeah, the compost, so the Holliston, Ashland, um, program. So we hit, I think it was something like six hundred, something, five hundred households. Once we hit five hundred, then the price drops for everybody, and so my price dropped this week, and I was like, oh.
I thought you were talking about the base.
Yeah, what's our trash fee?
Um, the base fee amount is one fifty-six.
One fifty-six.
A half or a quarter?
An annual, annually.
Oh, annual, okay.
And I believe it's seventy-six for seniors.
Yes, seventy-six. How much are the bags? I'm just trying to-
The bags are nine fifty for a roll of five.
Of the small ones?
Yes. So it's about two dollars a bag?
Yeah.
Okay, the thirty-three down?
Or is it the other way around? I forget, but-
All right, well.
So, obviously not something that's fun to talk about. You know, again, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to make sure that we're getting the best, best value here. And so we are looking at other communities and seeing what, you know, they're charging and kind of what they're going through, and seeing how we compare to that. I know some people don't like the comparison to other communities, but it's, it's at least an objective way of looking at where we stand in terms of providing value.
And just, just to kind of refresh my memory, so we have a, we have a trash enterprise fund, and so, you know, I think it would be helpful for me at least, like, if, when we just make some decisions that we see that, those line items, so we know kind of, okay, so this is, this is the revenue that we have to make up, because, you know, my perspective is, I would rather keep the base fee lower and increase the trash bag fee, because then it discourages people from using more trash bags. Although I wanna make sure that's equitable and that it doesn't disadvantage people that, that, um, you know, may live, I don't know, in a multifamily housing or something like that.
It has to be some kind of mix, right, I think, because one of the reasons our trash is going up is 'cause of fuel costs and labor costs and finding staff. Well, that, everyone gets impacted by that, and then the bag fees, again, I think maybe a little bit, so that everyone, again, if you're buying bags, are paying a little bit more, but it, it can't be, in my mind, it can't be one or the other.
I agree.
So a blend is what you're thinking about.
Yeah, yeah, but heavily, more, in my mind, more heavy on the backside.
Yeah, we really like that, and discourage businesses from creating all this waste, this plastic stuff and-
Businesses have, mostly have dumpsters.
Yeah, they usually have private-
No, I meant, uh, the producers of other packaging and things like that, you know, they're still, you know.
Yeah, I mean, that's, unfortunately, that's not within our control, but, um-
So another unfunded mandate.
Well, you can't brag about getting a grant and saying it's unfunded, though.
So, except that it wasn't, the state is, is making us do this, and we're fortunate enough to have good employees who can find grant funding to help us pay for it.
It's kind of indirect, because as I understand, decided mattresses were easily reusable and sho- and so should not be in the waste stream.
Either recycled or reused.
Yeah, so it's, they made that kind of decision statewide.
Yeah.
So my concern with respect to this whole thing is that the DPW and the APD, they're gonna have to really be vigilant on dead-end roads.
Oh, yeah.
Roads that are not heavily traveled, because we're gonna start finding these mattresses all over the place.
And that's one of the reasons why we wanted to do the, get the grant and do it free of charge, and hopefully we'll be able to continue to do that, so it would discourage-
But that's, you know, that's the alternative, alternative, yeah, absolutely.
Does anybody know, when you buy a new mattress, is it pretty routine to, for them to pick up the old one? I thought it was.
Yeah, that's actually a good point, um, usually for a nominal fee, like twenty bucks, where you buy your mattress, they will take your old one.
Encourage people to do that.
So Michael, what's the timeline for us to make a, to need to make a decision about trash bags? Like, is that gonna, or trash program in general, is that like soon?
They should probably do that within the next two, three months.
Okay.
The next meeting, or can it be pushed out a little?
We can push that out.
Push it after the holidays would be nice if we could.
Can we?
We could, we could do that if you're, if you're going, like, we could push it to January, if you feel confident that you can make a decision in January.
I think we have to.
I think we have to, yeah, okay.
Just 'cause we need, we need to factor it in for the, for the budget.
Sure.
Right, yeah, okay.
All right, if there's, uh, no other questions, we'll-
Nope.
Move on our agenda. Um, review and approve the public safety building dedication plaque. Steve, you had, um, wanted to put this on the agenda, I assume that you guys are-
Yeah, um, the committee has gone through, I don't know, Joe, how many iterations of this, Jen, maybe, maybe twenty, it seems like. And, uh, so I think we are confident at this point that we've captured, you know, all the folks that, that made a contribution, uh, to the committee. We, we, I know Rob wants to tweak the plaque and, and have his full name on there, Robert Shear, which is fine, we can do all that. But we're ready to, uh, to order this, so we would like the select board to approve this, so we can move forward.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I just have a question in regards to the building committee and how the names are on there. Their like seems no rhyme or reason.
Looks like the chair, vice chair, and then alphabetical.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Um, I just noticed that Brett Waters, he doesn't have a, an affiliation or anything, is he an at, at-large, or?
He was a resident at-large, he and Peter.
Same like Peter Chisholm.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's no, they don't, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So if we're all set, could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hardest part of that building done.
All right, passes five zero, thank you.
One less P C O.
Thank you to the building committee, and, uh, we're getting, we're getting close.
So Jen, we can probably, uh, with a few tweaks to the plaque, we can, uh, I'll send you an email tomorrow, then we can- You cut purchase orders?
No, we'll, um, no, they'll just, they'll, they'll send us an email.
We just, we just go and order it, okay, all right. We're doing it at NEC Trophy, just so we're keeping it, keeping it a little bit.
Keeping it in the family.
Keep business in town.
All right, sounds good. Uh, next item on our agenda is discuss making members of the design review committee special municipal employees. Um, Michael, you wanna talk about this?
Yeah, this was, um, a request made by the, uh, planning board chair. If you recall, uh, we, not too long ago, or the board designated, uh, the planning board members as special municipal employees for a specific purpose. So we had a number of professionals sitting on the board, and they could not take on clients who lived in Ashland because of their, um, affiliation with the planning board. Designating them as special municipal employees allowed them to represent clients that lived in Ashland, but they still couldn't represent those clients in front of the board that they are sitting on. Or offer advice on some, on, um, and get paid for advice on something related to the board that they were sitting on. So, uh, like a planning board member couldn't advise, if they're an architect, uh, we have a couple on the board, if they had a client, they could not represent that client in front of the planning board if they needed a permit. And they also couldn't advise them and be paid on, like, this is a process that you follow and things like that. So what, um, what this request is, is to designate the design review committee as special munis- municipal employees and giving them that flexibility as well.
Makes sense, 'cause there's a couple of architects on that, and, okay.
Yeah.
Just it makes it an even feel.
So is this just a simple vote? Just a simple vote?
Motion to, um, designate members of the design review committee as special municipal employees.
I move that we make members of the design review committee special municipal employees.
And this, this, um, is an umbrella, so all future members are covered under this.
Correct. The special municipal employee designation doesn't apply to the individuals, it applies to the members of the committee.
Okay.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes five zero, we're good to go. Uh, moving on to our consent agenda. Uh, moving on to our consent agenda, is there a motion?
To accept the consent agenda as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes five zero. You okay, Yolanda?
Yeah. A tickle in my throat.
Be right back, can you grab some more water? Okay. Um, so moving on to priority project update, Michael, you want to take us through those?
Yeah, um, so again, starting with downtown, um, so I think everybody has seen the progress that's being made on the sidewalks and also the brick banding. Um, we've had a few rainy days recently, so it's kind of hindered them. Um, but they are continuing to, to do that work up to the tracks and get that done by this year. Um, what they're also looking at doing is by Thanksgiving, completing the jacking under the tracks. And that's going to be an involved process. Uh, we'll, we're still waiting on the final traffic control plans, but there will be an impact there. So the, the intent is to get that done before Thanksgiving because we have some businesses in the area especially that would be greatly impacted.
So sidewalks on Main Street to the tracks.
To the tracks.
On both sides.
Yes, by this year.
By this year. Next year, the other side. Next year, the, uh, the underground, actual, the underground connections and removal of, of the light poles.
That is the intent.
And then milling and paving of Front Street, I understand, is going to be happening soon.
So when we last had a conversation about it, um, with the contractor, they had hoped to have, um, Front Street and Main Street up to the tracks and Summer Street, because that was part of it too, paved. So mil- milled and overlaid.
By when? Sorry.
By the end of this year. So by the, you know, and that's.
Before they shut the.
Yeah, before they shut the asphalt planes down. So, you know, I'm hesitant to say that that's exactly what's going to happen because a lot of it's weather dependent, but that is, um, what, that's the goal and that's what everybody's shooting for.
So when they, Michael, when they do that, when they, when they put the, the final code on.
Mm-hmm.
They won't have to dig underneath for the, uh, the installation of individual houses for electricity because it's, the, uh, the bus are already underground already?
Yeah, so, so the conduit, it's stubbed out to the property line. And so the process of building connections, we're, we've already started that process. So investigating each property that would be affected, checking out their meter, making sure that it would still be code compliant. Talk to the utilities about how it would, um, you know, how it would go, how it would direct, and we stubbed it out, you know, based on that, um, on that information.
Now, the traffic islands, yeah, they're everybody, uh, Main Street by the railroad tracks. Will they be removed or are they going to be narrowed or are they just going to stay the same?
So they're not going to stay the same. There's, they will still be there, they'll be a little bit of a different configuration. Um, we were going to do granite cobbles, um, instead of what we're doing is stamped asphalt that looks very similar to that.
And will they be of the size and shape that we need for the quiet zone?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so they're, you know, they will be at the height set to where, I think only the, the fire trucks could jump it if they needed to. Um, I'm trying to think if there's anything else on downtown. Um, we prob- like the crosswalks, we probably will not do until next year, too.
Question, the streetlights that are going in, do they only have streetlights in them? I had someone ask me if they were going to be having five G antennas in them. And I said I'm ninety percent positive that it's just streetlights going in our new light poles.
It's just streetlights.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we've never discussed five G.
I just, someone asked me and.
Oh, you had to ask?
We were standing in downtown and I, I was pretty sure that the streetlights were just going to have streetlights in them, but I said I would ask the question, so, thank you.
And, um, so they've also been installing a lot of the trees, a lot of the landscaping, so Montenegro Square has been, has been redone. Beth was really instrumental in that and getting a grant to do that work, so it's pretty good.
And there are streetlights in, but they don't have power yet? Is that what I'm seeing? There's some here at Town Hall that are in, there's some.
Yeah, th- there's still some that need to be, um, need to be installed, but they, they have the power, you know, running to them right now.
Okay.
So, um, there's just one more point that I lost, um. Yeah, must not be that. Yes.
Um, moving on to the public safety building?
Yeah, Jen, do you want to give an update on that?
Sure.
Um, so we're nearing the completion of the public safety, um, building project, so we're doing, um, some last inspections, um, really specifically on the police side. Um, obviously, we've had, um, I think we discussed it our last meeting, um, the apparatus bay doors that were delivered from the manufacturer were not the correct doors, meaning that they were not, they don't meet the design specifications. Um, they are in fact the right size, they're just not the right design. So it's really the windows we're supposed to, um, start about four feet up and go the whole length. And, um, it's both an aesthetic from a d- design perspective, but then also operationally, the fire department wanted the more, uh, windows so that they can also see if somebody approaches, um, the department uh, from the apparatus bay, which I guess happens pretty often in terms of like if you have somebody who's ill in your car and you think you're going to make it to the hospital and then you see a fire department, you tend to sort of just go into the, um, apparatus, um, apron, which I did not think of, but they, you know, obviously if they're in the big truck or they don't see it. So that gives them some visibility as well.
Just a question, because they look like they open this way?
They do open this, so they're bifold doors, yeah, and so, um.
Does that offer enough space for the trucks to go through? Okay.
Yeah.
And the reason that versus traditional.
Yes, good question.
Garage door style that you see on most other public safety buildings?
Though, these doors, these fourfold doors actually operate, they open in like, like six to eight seconds.
Okay.
Versus an overhead door that's usually twenty or twenty-five seconds.
Oh, okay.
So it's a much faster, uh, uh, response time. And also, there's less maintenance involved, there's less moving parts with these doors.
Oh, okay.
Than on the overhead doors, so that's another, and you'll see, there's, there's lots of local stations that have these bifold doors. And, you know, as Jen said, they're, um, these doors are the correct size doors, it's just these, the window configuration.
So they'll be replaced at no cost to us when the new ones.
Some point they'll be.
When the appropriate ones.
Yeah, we're working with, um, the general contractor to have an outline and one that will, will actually occur. Um, so we're still waiting for some components of, of the doors and that's why you can sort of, when you see them hanging, they're not quite touching.
Yeah.
We're waiting for the trolleys and the tracks so that they'll actually be able to, right now, they're not operational, which is why we wouldn't have, uh, the final inspection. Um, there'll also be a weather stripping, so there's a pretty large weather stripping that will actually connect.
Can't get underneath and.
Right, so all of that still has to be installed. Um, but still, sort of moving forward, um, the building is probably, you know, a ninety-nine percent complete. So we will be moving forward with the, our final, um, our final plumbing, our final electrical, our final building on the police side. We will not, and it's obviously the apparatus bay doors need to be functioning. Um, we're working on having a cut over date for dispatch. Um, so we are moving towards that. Um, everything else on the outside is done.
Tendive date for a ribbon cutting slash.
So we're going to discuss that, yeah, we're going to discuss, um, the ribbon cutting at our next, uh, building committee meeting. And so hopefully that will be in the winter. Um, but I think the departments will have moved in there. So if we do a cut over date, hopefully it'll be, um, in that mid-November range and then, so they'll operate out of there, um, once that opens and then we have to work obviously on the, the doors.
Okay, thank you.
I think people would be very happy when they see the inside of the door.
We hope.
You're almost at the finish line. Getting there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We need to, we may, need to bring in Zappy.
Zappy hour?
Um, before we move on to the.
Oh, boy.
Mindes School.
Motion to go past ten o'clock.
In a second?
Second.
Encourage you to vote no.
All those.
Aye.
Aye.
In favor?
No.
I know, I know, hesitantly. Yeah, I know, I hear you. Um, okay, so, uh, we're good with the public safety buildings or anything? Okay, all right. Um, Mindes School?
Yeah, we had a meeting last week.
Yes.
I, I think, so Yolanda and I had an opportunity to go on a tour of the site, um, and it's amazing the progress that they've made. You know, you're actually getting up on the second floors, you can now actually see kind of the outline of the rooms and, and what it's going to look like. So they hope to get weather tight, um, construction weather tight by the end of the year. And, um, so that's an important milestone. And unless I heard wrong, i- it sounds like they're still tracking for a July completion date.
Yep.
Next year.
Next year.
Yeah.
Wow.
The goal is July completion so that they can get everyone moved in, because to make it work, they have to have the current Mindes empty so they can demo at least half of it to finish the driveway for buses and kids to be able to get in as of the opening of school.
So, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I saw Paul Kettle at, um, Pumpkin Fest and he said that if, um, our board was interested in a sidewalk, that he'd be more than happy to, to take any of us over there. So, um, I said I would bring it up at our meeting.
Definitely.
But we can figure out a date maybe because, because it sounds like it's looking great, so.
It's just mind boggling that they're going to finish, finish that by, by July.
They have one more section of concrete to pour, or they did as of last week, was the kitchen area. But plumbing is already going in, electrical is already going in. It was interesting to hear, they talked about and showed us how the plumbing fixtures for the toilets, rather than do it all there, it comes in as one big piece for the multi-stall bathrooms. So it's, it's really moving forward. On the outside, they have a mock-up of what the outside is going to look, it looks really good. And on the gym side, they've already started putting brick on the wall, on the outside wall.
Wow.
Yeah.
There's a couple loads of brick.
It's a lot of brick. I mean, it's amazing, I mean, whatever you got, it's crazy, the amount of brick.
No doubt.
So what's, what's also been cool is, um, watching some of the, uh, some of our employees who are working on the public safety building project, they're able to take some of the lessons learned already and apply it to this project. So in terms of technical equipment and everything.
Some of the issues I know with like, um, technology, we've already started looking at what we need there because that's lead times of like nine months to a year, so we may have to bring some over and.
Utilities.
Utilities.
How great the horizon is.
It is geothermal.
It is.
Oh, yeah.
They've got the wells done.
It has the wells, oh, it was very cool seeing the wells.
How many wells?
Six? I think it's six wells, six or four.
We've got eighteen wells.
Yeah.
Yeah, so ours are a little shallower.
Right.
Oh, okay.
These are six hundred feet.
Yeah, they're pretty deep.
It's crazy how deep there's, these thermal wells are.
Wow.
Yeah.
I'm just, you know, I'm thinking about it relative to when we got to kind of a similar point at the public safety building. And the Mindes building is like three times the size of the public safety building. It's just amazing that that's.
You know, three times the size will have three times the people coming in to do the work and do stuff.
And they also have a, a much bigger site. I mean, it's not, they don't have the constraints that just.
Right, there's not a road right in front that they have to worry about. Just school, but.
Just some kids. Right, well, if you guys are interested in doing, like, I'll, I'll reach out to Paul and see if I can get a couple of potential dates and, and then I can send them to you guys and make them figure out a. Because it would be, it would be cool.
Yeah.
Um, so moving on to the Valentine project, so Mill City has started to, uh, move forward. They've set up the construction fencing. I don't know if you've driven by the site, so, um, that has, uh, you know, that's certainly an encouraging sign and I think people are very happy to see some activity there, um.
If I could keep getting updates as to when they're doing stuff, because, you know, we went in and we did the tour, I think it'd be great to show people as the work is being done. That, you know, when they pour the concrete around the, the foundation, when they start taking some of the stuff out and. Because people always like to see what's going on and if we don't show them, then they're gonna.
Come up with.
Create their own story of what's possibly going on, so.
They'll do that anyway.
So.
So, yeah.
That's great. And, uh, you know, Carl and Robin and other volunteers are continuing to do a job, a great job around the, um.
Yeah, it looks great.
I think a lot.
Yeah.
Um, okay, um, Warren District specifically four thirty-three Chestnut, so we did get the stamp survey from Paul. It was amazing.
It was the right height?
It was the right height.
Okay, because I've, I drove by the other day and they're putting on siding.
Yes, which is wood clapard siding.
Yep.
So sorry, I missed that meeting again.
Well, it was kind of amazing, so, you know, the board was obviously very, um, concerned about the fact that the survey hadn't been produced. And Paul, you know, was talking about having to rely on the person who did the original survey and so, you know, the suggestion was made, why don't you get a new surveyor? So somebody was out the next day, so. Yeah.
Glad, glad to hear that the, that the height of the building is within, you know, where, where it should be.
Yep.
Because then we would have had a much longer meeting because Paul would have been here tonight.
That's true.
I also, I think, saw them working on some stone walls and some landscaping around it the other day, so.
Yeah, they were doing, like, they were roughing that out when I went by and checked the clapard, so. Okay, so I think that's about it on that.
Moving on to town manager.
Yes, so early voting continues. Um, it actually continued tonight when we were doing trick or treating at Town Hall, that was great. Um, we've had hundred and sixty-five people come in person to vote. Um, we've sent out four, forty-three hundred ballots.
Forty-three hundred ballots, yeah.
Um, so far, we've got fifteen hundred back already.
Hmm.
Um, so pretty good. And we, the forty-three hundred is significant, right, because it's like a hundred percent?
Yeah, so we're, yeah, so as of. As of last week, we were, um, at a hundred percent of us, us sending out the ballots, so Cindy and her staff worked really hard to sort of turn them around within the first four or five days that the, that the state had given us ballots. And so when she was looking at other towns and communities, they were sort of about the sixty percent, but they did a ton of work leading up, knowing that the ballots were coming and how many. So they sort of pre-prepped, um, uh, envelopes and so that they could just stuff them in, so they got them out by precinct. So each day, they tried to get one out or, or two out, and so they were able to do it in four or five days. It was really incredible.
That's a huge percentage of voters in, in Ashland. I think it's what, like thirty percent? Because I think we have, what, twelve thousand-ish? I mean, that's a, that's a huge, that's a huge percentage, so.
Yeah, they've done, they've done excellent work. And, you know, thanks to Cindy and Christopher and Jean and all the coworkers.
Great job for that staff over there.
They, when do they count the mail? Is it that day, that night? Is it election night along with everything else? So they just throw them in?
Hold them, yeah.
They hold them and then by precinct, they put some in throughout the day and check them off.
Yeah, there's a, a certain number of days and I'm not sure that they're allowed to sort of pre, they have one, um, counter that's here and they're able to do that. It doesn't get counted, um, until the night of or the day of. Um, so they'll work on that as well.
So if they don't break it down by precincts then, right? They just.
No, we have one, yeah, there's one. They don't have to like.
Oh, I thought they got held and done on election day by precinct.
So they're, if they come in, they can do them, but we also have one here that doesn't leave.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So that's that. Um, in terms of health clinics, uh, yesterday, um, Raj, our health director, and Jess, our, our health nurse, they had a COVID booster clinic. This is the new booster, um, that's out that's supposed to, uh, address a number of variants. So I'm still getting a count on, on those, on how many people were served there. Uh, we also did a flu clinic or, you know, Raj and Jess also did a flu clinic, um, on, on October nineteenth as well, so.
Yeah.
You know, they continue to, um, they continue, you know, we offer a lot of services here for what we, for what we have to work with.
You do, and thankful. There were, there were quite a few number of residents that took the, uh, the flu shot and we were in line, so it was, uh, greatly appreciated, so.
Yeah, not all communities are doing.
No.
Even with more resources or.
I'm just waiting for the pneumonia shot, that's all.
A lot of thanks to our staff for that. Um, holiday programs, so we have almost a hundred families that are going to participate in our Thanksgiving and Thanksgiving, um, distribution, turkey distribution. Um, for our holiday program, we've got a hundred and fifteen families signed up.
Wow.
And, uh, two hundred and twenty-seven kids as part of that, so, um, I think November first is when they're planning on matching up, you know, donors and, and families, so people are still interested to be a donor, they can still get their name in, in time and be a part of that.
Yeah.
I, I had gotten an email from Jennifer. I, I had gotten an email from Jennifer, so she had done some proactive, reaching out for folks that had participated before. So there's a quick little survey to send out, so if, if folks have done it before, check your email.
Can you participate by not, by just donating?
Yes.
So that, you know, if you don't, if you don't wanna take a family, but you wanna just participate and donate in general?
Yes, yeah, so they're doing it a, a little bit different, sort of giving a little bit more of an outline on sort of what would be expected if you're going to, um, you know, ha, take a family or take a child, um, and, but if you're not able to do that, but you still wanna participate, um, you can donate.
And where can you go to find out that information?
Um, let me try, I think it should be on our, on our website, under human services, um, but let me just, or a community center. But let me just, I will look, I'm gonna get it for you, I'm gonna get it for you.
Steve's looking.
No, I just, the turkey giveaway is on November twenty-first, uh, didn't mention that day. No, it wasn't actually, but Michael mentioned it, so. I've been doing the, for the last few years, the, the traffic direction, and one year, a few, a couple of years ago. A couple of years ago, uh, it rained, oh, man. I mean, everybody was soaked, because everything is pretty much done outside.
Yeah.
And, uh, it was, it was nasty.
So I'm gonna skip.
You can get that to me separately, Jen, thank you.
Sure, thanks.
So do you wanna talk about the pumpkin project?
I can.
That's next.
Sure. Um, so this week, we had our first post-COVID, um, intergenerational program. So, you know, a few years back, we started to do a little bit of work, um, sort of connecting the dots between the senior center upstairs and the rec department downstairs, and doing some joint programming. We did a pollination garden, we did, um, there was a, a program in which they did some, um, like storytelling between seniors, and then the students wrote stories for them, and it was presented, it was really, a really nice program. So on a much smaller scale, just sort of starting that, um, that program again. Um, where, uh, young people, so I think we had, we had a few, I think we had twenty kids, um, and a handful of seniors. And they did sort of a pumpkin decorating, um, activity, which was really fun. Um, and they were supposed, they're, they're gonna do hopefully some cookie decorating, so just sort of bringing the two groups together a bit more. Um, there's a lot of sort of mentoring that happens, and it's a really great program. I think Kristen talked a bit about it, she's doing a lot of that too. Um, she's, is also situated at the community center, so she'll be sort of working with all of the, um, all the departments, and so sort of bringing that together. But the pumpkin decorating program was this week, it was a sast, the, this, um, it sounded like the kids had a ton of fun, and I think the seniors had a good time too. So hopefully we'll be doing a little bit more of that in the future.
There's pictures somewhere.
For sure, yeah, Kelly always takes good pictures.
Oh, good.
Yeah. There's paint involved, so you can imagine.
Yes, yeah. Good times.
All you need is some glitter.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I think there was a little glitter in those, Google eyes.
And it never goes away.
Never.
Um, so just a reminder for everybody, November fourteenth, we'll be ha, at twelve P M., we'll be having our Veterans Day lunch at the community center. Um, this year, it's sponsored by the Ashland Fire Department and Ashland Police Department. Uh, previously, it was the associations, um, that would do that, but it's actually going to be sponsored by the departments this year as well. So, and we don't have a speaker, um, like we did last year, um, but, uh, it's still gonna be a great program, so I would encourage you all to attend. And then a couple more things that just, uh, aren't on the agenda here, um, so, Beth Reynolds will be hosting a meet and greet tomorrow at the bagel table. At, uh, at eight, starting at eight, I believe. And then, um, this evening, uh, from four to seven, we did our annual trick or treating here at town hall. We had a great turnout, uh, we actually ended up having to go get candy, thanks Susan. Had, I had to make a really quick run. Uh, many thanks to everybody who came by and participated, and then also our staff, who just had this place decorated to the, to the hill.
Looks great.
Yeah. And they dressed up in costume, they, you know, they, they get into it each year. So this is our, what, third, third year that we did it?
Yeah.
What was nice was the library also did it this year.
Yes, so they, they worked with us.
Nice. Yeah. So, Michael, it was one for you and one for me, is that how you give out candy?
Um, yeah, it was like one for you and then whatever's left, so. I definitely had my share of M and Ms, so. I had some good discussions with some kids about what was better, peanut M and Ms or plain?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tough decision.
Important.
Yeah, well, I mean, we should have brought that up at the, we should have put it on the agenda for tonight.
Seriously.
So, and that's, that's all I have.
Okay, sounds good, alright, we're moving into board reports, uh, Joe, you wanna start?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, congratulations to the, uh, student council for their pumpkin festival over the last weekend. They did a great job, unfortunately, I couldn't be there, but my wife was there, and she said it was a great time. And a lot of you guys, folks were there as well, so congratulations. Um, I'll be attending, uh, the high school this Saturday with the, the festival of lights, uh, it was five o'clock, I believe? Or three o'clock, three to five? Five, okay, so we'll be there for that. And, um, I just wanna, uh, reiterate and promote the, uh, the thirty-fifth annual Ashland Halloween parade and party, which will be the last one at the Mindes School. The old school. They were, they've, they've all been held there, so, uh, other than last year's, when we did the, uh, walkover to the pavilion. And, uh, which was quite a bit of fun. So I don't wanna see any more candy after last night, we made four hundred goody bags.
Wow.
Oh my God, you have no idea. But it was a lot of fun, we had more laughs than, so, there may be some kids that goody bags may be a little skimpy. But that was after the end of the night, not, you know.
Hope you had some Halloween helpers.
Oh, we had quite a few this time around, which was very, very nice, it was a lot of fun, so.
I'll be with you on Friday, Joe, wearing my costume.
You'll wear your costume. I hope, well, Whacker will show up hopefully, right?
I can see about Whacker coming.
Yeah, I, I hope so, because I gave, uh, Barbara all the information, so I hope they're there, if you can remember. Uh, we start at six o'clock at the, uh, Montana Grove Square. And then we, uh, parade down through, uh, Concord Street, right to the, uh, Mindes, uh, middle school doors, and right into the gym, and, uh, it's, it's a lot of fun.
It is.
It, it's a lot of fun, we have, uh, three different age groups. Uh, each, uh, each age group gets, uh, there are four costume winners, uh, they all get twenty-five dollar gift certificates to Target. And then there are two, uh, fifty dollar gift certificates of, uh, adults that get dressed up. And, uh, they, uh, fifty dollars at, uh, Brim's.
Wow.
So, be there, you know, and everyone gets a goody bag, everyone gets a thing of juice, and, uh,
Donut holes?
Donut holes, and, and donut holes, and donut holes, so, yeah, it's, it's a lot of fun. Lot of work, but it's a lot of fun, and see all the smiles on the kids' faces, so, hope to see you folks there if you can make it. That's all I have, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Yolanda?
So Mindes Building, we already reviewed. Upcoming tomorrow morning at eight, I have our Metro West Regional Collaborative Meeting in the morning. And then at nine-thirty, I am our MAPC Ashland Town Representative, and it's Fall Council Meeting, it's being done remotely. For, uh, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at the Marcones VFW Theater, Ashland Community Theater is presenting Dracula. Should be a lot of fun. Um, you can either get tickets beforehand, uh, which I recommend, because I think they're really promoting this, so if you think you wanna go. They're also doing a, uh, costume contest, so if you wanna dress up and go to see the show.
Is it just this weekend?
It's just this weekend, yeah, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Uh, and then, it has just come out, ABA is doing their comedy night again, it's gonna be on November eighteenth. And it is going to be in person. And it's the same gentleman, Corey Rodriguez, who they've had the last two years via Zoom. He is very funny, he is an Ashland resident, uh, so tickets are available for that. And that is also at the VFW slash Marconi Theater on Friday, November eighteenth. And it goes to support the ABA Scholarship Fund. Uh, and that's all I got.
Alright, sounds good, Steve, you're up next.
Okay, thank you, uh, it is amazing the events that we are having in town. I mean, it's just this continuous stream of events, which is great. So first, uh, just wanna, uh, announce the farmer's market, the Ashland Farmer's Market Thanksgiving Market will be on Saturday, November the nineteenth, ten A M. to one P M. Uh, I think we've got over thirty vendors coming, so, uh, should be plenty of opportunities to pick up, uh, veggies and, and all the other paraphernalia for Thanksgiving. Wanted to, uh, announce the senior, the Lions Senior Breakfast next Thursday, November the third, at the community center, that's at nine A M. Also wanna, uh, just discuss or just point out the senior lunch program that's been going on for, I don't know, over three years. Uh, started pre-COVID, uh, and the, the senior lunch program happens on every Monday. And it's subsidized by the, uh, the Friends of the Council on Aging. And so prior to COVID, it was an in-house social gathering for lunch. When COVID started, it became a, uh, just a to-go, uh, lunch program. And then as COVID started to ease, it became kind of a hybrid. Some people would, would come in, and some people would, would, uh, take out. As of November the seventh, the lunches will only be in-house. Uh, the intent was to create a social, uh, situation. And so it will only be in-house lunch as of November the seventh, so. Just wanted to announce that, and then lastly, I just wanted to, uh, also, you, relative to the, to lunch, and also the pumpkin fence, I, I, Pumpkin Fest, I wanted to acknowledge, uh, Chief Rossi for being at both events. She came to visit the seniors on Monday, and really, really, uh, engaged with them, I thought, really nicely. Talked about her background, and talked about some of the, her plans for, for the department and so on. So it was really, really nice to see her, it was nice to see her at Pumpkin Fest as well. You know, I understand that we're hiring a couple of, uh, of officers. And, uh, it would be great to have, have the chief here at some point soon to just give us an update and so on. But, uh, it was good to see her at both events. And then the last thing actually is, I just wanted to congratulate, uh, congratulate, uh, Town Council Lisa Mead. She was chosen as one of the top Women of Law in twenty-twenty-two by the Massachusetts Lawyers Weekly. Apparently that's a pretty big deal, so I just wanted to congratulate Lisa for that.
Congratulations.
And that's it.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
Yeah, my, uh, I just wanted to report on the MBTA Forward Funding Seminar that took place two weeks ago. I think we all got invitations to it, I, it was four hours during a workday, but I kept it on, that's the great thing about Zoom. You can just keep it on and do other things. Yeah, uh, but, you know, to kind of, it was really an interesting panel, these four, or, no, about tw- twelve different people. There are a range of people, um, with different panels, but the main thing, I came away, I mean, there's a ton of things going on with the T, you know, electrification, uh, fare reduction, uh, bus lanes, improving buses, that was a big thing. Uh, but I, without getting too much into it, I think, um, the, just the most of what they were saying, for example, fare reduction is not, uh, fare increases are not gonna happen. Fares have increased more than anything else, any other revenue source at the T. So there's kind of like, uh, seems to be a consensus that no more fare reductions, I don't know if that's true for commuter rail, but, you know, the, the buses and the lower-income people that use mass transit, it's, you know, and, and Mayor Wu was trying that, that pilot project with no fares, and other people are doing it as well. So you're not gonna see a lot of revenue there, uh, uh, to cut to the chase, the, it really came down to if we wanna have an MBTA that's gonna be effective, modern, sustainable, uh, something people can use and, and help our transportation issues and our economic development, our, and our sustainability. It's really gonna have to go back to the funding structure. And next year, the, the Fed, the federal money's going away, there's got a budget cliff. Um, so I, I think we can expect to hear more about changing the funding in a big way for the T, because otherwise, the other options don't look good, and it goes back to the legislature and the governor. And so what, you know, just to, to our, our issue with the station, of course, the, the capital funding is inadequate across the system. And now they're all focusing on the safety issue, because that's, you know, there are a lot of monies going there. Um, but it doesn't affect commuter rail, actually, uh, because it's a different agency, but, you know, so, it's, the operating budget is inadequate, so, um, anyway, that's the kind of pessimistic but interesting, um, uh, you know, the, the, um, the Advisory Board led this kind of seminar, to try to keep things going and to bring attention to these things, so.
Rob, did they give any, uh, indication that they were working on, I know Channel Four did an exposé on the, the amount of monies that have been uncollected?
That came up, yeah. You can see it yourself, but, you know, there is a crackdown, I just noticed in the last week or so, they're collecting much mo- more on commuter rail.
It was one point two to two million a month that they weren't able, they weren't collecting.
I think they're aware, yes, I think they're aware of that, and, like, I know commuter rail, they put, they put in new, um, new gates at North Station. You can't even get onto the concourse without a pass. So I don't know, and I don't know what the, the subway, there's a lot of challenges in collecting fares and buses and subways on an angry basis.
Not enough, not enough conductors on the trains themselves that go for them.
It's also difficult, you know, you gotta try to figure out how to make it. You know, when I was in New York City, you can now use your credit card and scan, there's no, like, yeah.
Your phone.
Yeah, I'm, yeah.
You have Apple Pay, you just tap and get on the subway.
So that's the kind of stuff we gotta look at, too, part of it's gonna be efficiency, but anyway. That's, that's kind of the trend, is like, what are we gonna do next, so, anyway, that's it.
Okay, sounds good, I just have a few things. Um, we haven't met since, uh, we were all in the, the hometown parade. So I just wanted to, um, give another shout-out to Kate Jersik. And her team, um, and also, you know, DPW and our public safety folks, and, um, Michael and Jen and everyone who, and Beth, who were kind of part of making sure that that went off without a hitch, um, and it was a great day, and it was so much fun. So, you know, hopefully, yeah, and Fall Fest. And then we had the, um, there was a, a Diwali Festival at Corner Spot that we were at, and it was good. And so, like, there's been, you know, to Steve's point, there's a lot of really great community activities. Um, it's been, it's been really, really great. Um, also, I didn't make it over to the fire station's open house this past weekend, but just to, um, thank the, the, the Fire Department for hosting the last one at the old fire station. I know Steve, when I saw pictures.
We, we met with Sparky and Smokey?
Yeah, did they give you good advice?
Hopefully, it goes somewhere.
Okay, never mind, we're gonna, alright, we're gonna move on, it's been a long night.
It'd be good if you got out of here by ten-thirty.
But, but, so, so thank you to the Fire Department for putting that together. Um, I also wanted to just let you guys know, so, the last time, we had talked about the Ashland Access Pages, that was going in the town pages. Um, that was, so the, I think the idea is to do this quarterly, um, not print it quarterly, but produce it quarterly. Um, I had sent Ashley like a little blurb, it, two-hundred-and-fifty words, which is not a lot of words.
No.
Um, just about who we are, what we do, how to contact us, when we meet, um, just some real basic stuff. But at least it kind of gets that in there, I haven't seen it kind of laid out and things, but it, um, but it, so.
Now we got a picture.
I mean, now we got a picture, okay, is that where, is that where it's going?
I believe so.
Okay.
Ah, that's what the noise was, that's what she's been trying to do for the last two months.
So, but I just wanted to give you guys a heads up that that, that will be in the next issue, which will be digital only, but, um, it'll be, I guess, available at the library and other places too, so.
Okay.
Um, and that is all I have, so, um, with that, if I could get a motion to adjourn?
I would do that, I just wanna send out condolences to, uh, several families in Ashland who lost some dear members, and a town employee who worked for the school department for over, uh, twenty-five years. And that was Hilda God Kelly Popovich passed away, uh, this past week.
Oh, what?
Yeah, Kelly passed, yeah, I'll talk to you later about it. And, um, uh, Jane Casuelo, uh, maiden name is White, uh, she passed, she's the one that, uh, had a leg amputated, and she had a massive heart attack. Uh, unfortunately, God bless her, and, uh, another classmate, uh, Kathy Melman, uh, lived in Ashland on Main Street for a number of years. So, uh, condolences to their families and, and to the friends of all of them, and, uh, may they rest in peace at all. So, with that, I'll second the motion to adjourn.
I made the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye. And we'll see you November ninth.
November ninth will be our next meeting, so, um, thank you all, and we are adjourned.
Thank you, thanks. Don't forget to sign it.